All right, it's 5:54 PM. To call this public hearing to order, please. In just a moment of silence.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Hawes.
Here.
Ms. Krishnawski.
Here.
Mr. LaScavige.
Here.
Ms. McDermott.
Here.
Mr. Perry.
Here.
Mr. Sabatino.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson.
No.
Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Mr. Willoughby.
Here.
Mr. Lunt.
Here.
You have ten of eleven present.
Thank you. We'll now have public comment on the proposed ordinance affirming protection for election workers from intimidation, harassment, and assault, and enhancing collaboration with Luzerne County District Attorney's Office. I have a bunch of slips up here, so I'll just start off. Robin Kochan? Is that microphone working? Okay. One second, Ms. Kochan.
Thank you. Robin Kochan, Dallas Township. It's disconcerting that Councilwoman Smith seeks to discourage civic engagement by censoring and punishing free speech and opposing views. Additionally, proposing an ordinance for the DA to prioritize election worker complaints is an insult to the public when we waited two years for his results of the Paper Gate election investigation, or that Beth Gilbert was allowed to simply resign after her role in the Paper Gate election and is now the voting and election manager for a Dropbox group. Presumably, as attorneys both Councilwoman Smith and county manager Crocamo are aware that laws already exist to protect any person from such crimes. If elections were transparent and well-run, there would be no cause for election personnel to feel anxious or public frustration. We would hope efforts focus instead on bringing the community together rather than widening the divide. We implore council and all government personnel to seriously consider their duty as public servants. We take our time to participate in meetings because we care about our community, yet our questions and concerns are often unaddressed. The county has had years to develop and implement a plan for fair elections, yet here we are again in chaos before a critical election. Instead of wasting time and resources on drop boxes, which are not provided for by law and have been eliminated in numerous countries due to documented fraud, the county could have been making the election process more attractive to new hires, existing personnel, and the public through training, education, and ensuring election integrity. We strongly encourage you to vote "no" on this ordinance and instead implement a positive approach, as suggested by Councilman Hawes in the September meeting. Inviting the community to be actively engaged and offering transparency would do wonders for this county rather than using lawsuits and lawfare to fine and jail concerned community members. Lastly, we ask, how would you feel when your taxes pay for an unresponsive and ineffective government? As community leaders, you have the power to make positive changes, and we fully expect you to do so. It's long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kochan. Next up, we have Beth Gilbert.
Hi, everyone. My name is Beth Gilbert from Wilkes-Barre. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. As a former deputy director of elections for Luzerne County, I've experienced the challenges of protecting the integrity of our elections firsthand. But tonight, I speak to you not just in that capacity, but as a mother. A mother who has faced chilling threats that extended beyond the professional sphere into deeply personal terrain. Throughout my time at the Bureau of Elections, I faced challenges that went well beyond the realm of standard professional criticism. While I anticipated that the tuff skin I had from having served years on Wilkes-Barre City Council was enough to handle the pressure, the reality of the threats I encountered was far more severe, ranging from people saying that I should be, quote, "shot," or, quote, "drawn and quartered," to receiving anonymous threatening notes in my home. At the height of these threats, sheriff's deputies were assigned to stay in the bureau. Deputies escorted me and my colleagues out of public meetings to ensure that we got out safely. During one public meeting, we were escorted to an office in the courthouse by deputies and had to wait until the public left before being escorted out. These threats were not confined to anonymous letters or while I was just in public. They were perpetuated through social media. The worst of these intimidation tactics, however, was when images of my young son circulated on extremist groups online. I was used to having public criticism and sadly, at this point, threats of violence. But having photos of my two-year-old son shared with malicious intent, an innocent boy with no concept of how divisive this work is, broke me. I had to call a school that night to notify them of what was occurring, and the school had to alter their own security plans to accommodate him and all of his classmates safely. I had to have an advanced security system installed in my home. At the height of these threats, I often questioned if my son would be safer with me gone. The need for the election worker protection ordinance is underscored by these experiences. I turned in every single one of these threats. No one was ever prosecuted. The law hasn't caught up with the divisiveness of elections in our country and the hatred for elections officials. This legislation broadens the definition of who is considered an election worker, extending protections to all involved in our elections, not just those at polling places. Importantly, it also addresses the increasingly issue of doxing, which means to search for and publish private or identifying information about a particular individual on the Internet, typically with malicious intent. Tonight, I urge you to consider the very real impact that insufficient protections have on individuals and their families. This ordinance isn't just about ensuring the logistical smooth running of elections. It's about ensuring those who dedicate themselves to this essential public service can work without fearing for their own personal safety or that of their families. I ask you to support this vital ordinance to protect not only the sanctity of our electoral process, but also the individuals and families behind it.
Thank you, Ms. Gilbert.
This isn't a Democrat or Republican issue, it's a human issue.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up, we have Alicia Hoffman-Miralovich.
Did you all know? My name is Alicia Hoffman-Miralovich. I am from Fairview Township, and I am the executive director of Action Together NIPA and Endless Together NIPA. I'm here today on behalf of voters from across the county, your constituents, voters who support passing the election worker protection ordinance to ensure that their friends, neighbors, and family members who work together to run our elections are able to do so safely with the support of their county. Our organizations give members of the community the opportunity and the tools they need to contact their elected officials and make their voices heard in local government. This time, instead of giving certain council members the opportunity to accuse their constituents of plagiarism and spam because they have the audacity to send you all an email using a form, instead, I am going to present each and every one of you with two petitions. One of these petitions has more than thirty signatures from Kermit and former poll workers and other elections officials who support this ordinance. The second petition has more than one hundred registered voters from Luzerne County with their municipalities who also support this ordinance. It's the very least that you can do to show these dedicated public servants and that their safety and our election integrity is your highest priority. This is something that has come up over the certain several weeks before the election, this constant concern about integrity. And from even Beth Gilbert's testimony, this is not the first time I've heard threats. And I have heard people say that they have PTSD from serving as election workers. If we have issues recruiting election workers, we need to show them that we care about them at all levels and that they are all protected, which is why I urge you to vote for this ordinance. And as promised, there are two sheets for each of you, one with each petition and all of the names.
All right, we'll have to get a copy of that to publish online. Thank you. Next up, we have Walter Griffith.
Good evening, council. My concern with the proposed ordinance is that it wasn't submitted properly to council, as I mentioned before. The original ordinance was submitted on nine-ten, and then it was changed that very day with another document that was sent to council. The proper procedure to amend an ordinance is to introduce the ordinance and then amend it. That's the proper procedure. You don't get to bring an ordinance, get it introduced, and then bring another ordinance on top of it because you don't like the language it was in it. That's the biggest concern that I have with the ordinance. The second concern I have with it is, we do have law enforcement officers at polling places, we do have law enforcement officers, a couple of them sitting right here, to watch these meetings for security. If somebody's been threatened, as Ms. Gilbert and I don't condone that behavior at all, if somebody's threatened, there's an avenue to handle. Go to law enforcement, press charges, whatever you need to do if it's a threat for bodily harm of some sort. That would be the proper procedure. I don't think an ordinance that this council's going to draft is going to change any of that. I think it's window dressing at best. We do have laws that prohibit that. Myself included, I ended up, just for simply petitioning against government, it cost me severe amounts of money and heartache. Mr. Hawes was unduly targeted by people at the last election because of his association with some people. This is not, this is public service, this is kind of not what we sign up for, but it happens. We have avenues to handle that. This ordinance isn't going to change any of that. We could go to police departments, we could file charges with the district attorney, we could do all of those things. This ordinance isn't going to stop any of that. All it's going to do is put another roadblock in the way of anybody who wants to express an opinion about what they feel is not working well in their government. And I don't think we should ever do that. People should have a right to speak out about their government. I totally agree, we should do it respectfully, without any kind of threats of any kind. But that's a personal issue for people to get a grip on their own selves. If you're going to address somebody with a malicious attitude, then you need to be held accountable for that. We need to do things respectfully, honestly, and in a spirit of cooperation to try and help people. We're not going to get anywhere by trying to tell people we're going to threaten them or putting their children up online. That's totally unacceptable. But this ordinance isn't going to fix any of that. We have laws to fix that. It's just something that's not going to fix anything, and it's a waste of time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Next, we have Andrea Glaude.
Good evening. My name is Andrea Glaude. I'm from Wilkes-Barre. I've looked at this ordinance. It seems to me that the ordinance says that the Luzerne County District Attorney's Office will enforce all provisions of the Pennsylvania Crime Code, Pennsylvania Election Code, and applicable federal laws that protect election officials from interference, intimidation, or retaliation. It says that no person shall obstruct, hinder, or otherwise interfere with an election official in performance of their duties. It says it is useful, it is unlawful, to threaten, coerce, or attempt to influence an election official through fear, through using fear, through threats of force to disa-- I'm sorry, um, doxing. It also says that retaliation by threatening poll security personnel is forbidden. It says that verbal or physical conduct designed to hurt an official, and it also says you should not use derogatory or threatening language. I can't understand why anybody would vote against that, any of those things. We can protect our election workers, one, because it's too hard, we're too busy, they don't deserve it, or probably those things won't happen. But if they do, which the former, the speaker right before me said they do, we should just sit back and hope for the best and not do anything to improve our treatment of those officials. Why would anybody not vote to enact this ordinance?
Thank you, Ms. Glaude. Next, we have, I don't know how to read this name, Dr. Jean, I'm sorry, I can't read the last, Reisinger?
It's not about--
Oh, it's not?
No.
Okay, all right, it said "public hearing." Is it about an item on the voting session agenda?
No, it's just, no, I wanted to ask about the money for the--
Okay. We'll have you come back up at the second public comment session, if that's okay, sir. Yeah, it'll be after our voting session, which, yeah.
At the end of the voting--
Right. Next, we have Mark Raybo.
Good evening, council, county manager Crocamo, ladies and gentlemen of the county. My name is Mark Raybo of Hazelton, in person, alive and well. And I just want to say, as I've said previously about this ordinance, and I'll be on a legal and also my own personal perspective, I do not believe that the county has any jurisdiction in terms of putting a sentencing guideline in for this ordinance. The way it works in the state that you all live in and I live in is that the sentencing guidelines is the sole authority of the Commission on Sentencing down in Harrisburg. I don't even think the judiciary up on the third floor has even the jurisdiction or the authority to remand sentencing guidelines, override them of the Commission on Sentencing in Harrisburg. So I think we better have a conversation with the board members of the Commission on Sentencing before enacting this. Just my advice. Take it for what it's worth. Also, little history lesson, based on the former deputy director slash acting director, she was appointed, she was hired by then-county manager Robertson knowingly full well that she had zero experience, and she was an elected official at the time. And as I stated back then, that is the fox guarding the hen house. How can you have a current elected official also be in the election office handling ballots? Tell me how that's not a corrupting influence right there. That should be left up to the state legislators. And Ms. Brin Smith, as I said, I have no problem with any kind of proposing of ordinances from any member of council, manager, or Mr. Chairman. That's what the council does. But they don't have the right or jurisdiction to supersede the legislators that create the laws of this Commonwealth, as well as the governor, who, by the way, in February earlier this year, created a task force on any kind of threats to any election workers. And I sent that to council and the county manager. Also, there's a federal task force that was created by the U.S. Attorney General, which deals with election threats, doxing, and all that stuff. So what is this really about? Is this about stroking the egos of the far-left of our community, or is this really about safety? I leave that up to your capable hands. I don't think this is about security, or safety, or integrity. I think this is an ego trip. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Next up, we have, next up, we have Anita Davis.
Good evening, council. I would hope that you would vote for protection--
Ms. Davis, can you state your municipality, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm from Wilkes-Barre, actually Plains.
Okay, thank you.
And I was hoping that you would adopt this ordinance because this is not a normal election, this is not normal times. In the last meeting with the election board, one of the back Mountain polling worker, head of the polling area, said that weapons are allowed to be brought on to the polling stations. And I don't think that's a good idea. I don't know if you could address that in the ordinance, but it is not necessary to bring weapons to a voting station. Luzerne County has been on the national news for the past three elections. We have had five election directors in five years. Ms. Emily Cook was on TV, and she said someone said that she should also be drawn and quartered. And she is a third-generation poll worker, very upstanding, and just wants to see the elections run smoothly. We have lost thirty-six percent of our experienced election workers, and this is due to the chaos and confusion that some of our residents create in order to promote disruptions in our county elections, which is not right. So this has led to some mistakes when we are running our elections, and instead of supporting the county election workers, certain citizens create more chaos in order to take up the time of said council or the election board, instead of addressing issues that we should be focusing our attention on. This is eroding our election system by these threats that they spread, the lies they spread, such as when they throw out ballots for lack of signatures, purging voter rolls. And I think that you should support our valuable election workers against this onslaught of chaos and obstruction of our legal voting system. Give them the security, the security they deserve. I worked as a canvassing person--
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Okay.
I apologize. Thank you. All right, next up, we have Cindy Malkmus.
Hi. My name is Cindy Malkmus. I'm from Dallas Township. I wanted to thank county council for the opportunity to speak today. I'm concerned about the safety of our election workers. In our society today, people are more and more passionate about their views regarding politics. Oftentimes, this passion becomes violent. We see this rhetoric and heated arguments many places, and Luzerne County Courthouse is no exception. We witnessed it in becoming increasingly angry at the last county council meeting, both outside prior to the meeting and again when the meeting began. People at times can feel unsafe when situations begin to escalate. We've seen this more and more as our election day draws near. I have a coworker that has worked for the county in the capacity of judge of elections for years. When I asked her recently about volunteering again this cycle, she said she didn't feel safe to do so and wouldn't be offering her services this time around. It's hard enough to get anyone to volunteer for anything when someone who has made a commitment for years to give their time decides it's in their best interest to do so this time. It should be a wake-up call for us all. We can't afford to let anyone go who's made such a commitment. After all, we have an obligation to ensure that everyone is safe when working to help in our democracy. Our democracy depends on free and fair elections. Our elected officials work so hard to ensure that everything runs smoothly so that everyone's voices can be heard. The Luzerne County Election Workers Protection Ordinance is about that. It's about ensuring the safety of these workers, the safety of our democratic process, and in making sure that every vote is counted, every voice is heard. Please pass this ordinance so that we can ensure these efforts are met, that everyone is safe in their work, and our democracy is intact. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Malkmus. Anybody else in the audience for public comment? Mr. Knapp?
Ron Knapp from Nanticoke, Pennsylvania. This ordinance, protection for election workers from intimidation and harassment, harassment, persistent actions including verbal or physical conduct designed to disturb or upset an election official are unlawful. Is this harassment to mention in 2020, nine military mail-in ballots for the November 3rd general election were found in the dumpster? Or in the 2021 primary, when headers of Republican ballots on the electronic devices at polling places were incorrectly labeled as Democratic ones? Or Luzerne County's November 2022 general election paper shortage, Paper Gate? Or last but not least, Luzerne County has no video surveillance recording from the Wright Manor Dropbox from the April 23rd primary election largely due to miscommunication? The agenda ordinance is, in my opinion, trying to intimidate the public from coming forward to the podium and shedding light on systematic problems the whole country is aware of. Remember, Luzerne County is in the spotlight regarding all the mishaps that have taken place. I find it convenient that an ordinance be brought at this time, and the very nature of it is alarming, to say the least. Allow me to give an example of harassment that yours truly experienced, was managed by DA office to the best of his and staff's ability. The father of an election worker faces a misdemeanor theft charge after police say he was caught on video stealing a Luzerne County Council candidate's campaign sign from the polling place in Nanticoke on the morning of the primary election of 2021. I see this as the nature of the beast, "the beast" in quotation marks. Those who choose to be a part of an apparatus that is designed to change a broken system will be subject to criticism in a constructive manner. I would say it is constructive criticism at best for all involved regarding public officials and supporters. Although the agenda item is brilliantly drawn up, still the fact remains, in Home Rule Charter, Article II legislative branch, county council, limitation, not interference, no member of county council or committee or employee thereof shall publicly or privately give directions or orders to the county manager, any employee of the executive branch, the controller, district attorney, or any employee their office. I end with, "For God will bring every deed into judgment, including every hidden thing, whether it is good or evil." Ecclesiastes 12:14. The truth is incontrovertible.
All right, thank you, Mr. Knapp. Thank you.
Malice may attack--
Thank you, Mr. Knapp.
Have a good day.
Anybody else for public comment? Mr. Fitzgerald? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Nina Ropa, Kingston Township. I've listened to all of this tonight, and I am appalled that we already do have laws in place and that anybody would bring this up in Luzerne County when we already have so many problems in this county. I mean, how far are you going to take this when Mr. Hawes was just flung through the mud by filthy flyers in everybody's mail? Where you gonna go and investigate all those people that sent out those flyers? That's terrible. How far are you going to take this? This is ridiculous. We need more than this in Luzerne County. We already have laws in place, and we just need them taken care of and followed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ropa.
Theodore Fitzgerald, Newport Township. Just so you know, I've gotten many threats, and, hold on a second.
Mr. Fitzgerald, please.
No, I'm just--
I'm not going to warn you again, okay? Every time you come up here, there's always a curse, there's always a swear.
I'm just showing you a video where I was threatened, that's all.
Please, okay, that's--
That's all. I was threatened. I have been threatened many times.
Extremely inappropriate.
No, I'm just, this is a fact.
Okay.
This is a voicemail. I have received many, many voicemails of threats. I have been accused of being a racist, Hitler, people have said that I should be dead to my face. It's the world, and it's sad. I don't agree with it. Well, how we solve the problem is not by an ordinance. How we solve the problem, as Ms. Kochan said it perfectly, how we do this is we clear up the election bureau so they don't make mistakes, so we have transparency, so we could trust it. That's how we do it. And I sent all these to, just in case I did lose my life, I did send it to the Times Leader, I sent her every one of these-- I sent her every one of these copies because I did fear for my life, and it's not a good thing. And I get that people do stupid things. I've done it before in my past, too. Not to, you know, to that, but the thing of it is, is that what we have to do is everything gets resolved when we have better elections. That's it. So what we need to do is staff the election bureau with Democrats and Republicans and independents, not just Democrats. What we need to do is make sure we're prepared and make sure we don't make mistakes. People feel abused. People feel under the thumb, and they're not heard. And because we don't have transparency, frustration comes out. And we could just, we could get the pressure cooker down. And the only way we could get the pressure down is not by pushing them down further. That's just gonna make the pressure cooker explode. That's silly. What we need to do is solve the problem at the election bureau, and we are going in the right way. We are. But we need to make sure that we have a good election, we don't get backlog to 4,000, and then you'll have a happy audience. It's that simple. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Anybody else for public comment for the public hearing in the audience? Mr. Shapiro?
Gavi Shapiro, Kingston. This ordinance intends to codify thought crime into law. Threats are already illegal. This ordinance switches prosecution to be based off feelings as opposed to facts. Rather than telling those who are complaining to shut up, which is essentially what this ordinance does, we should be attempting to fix the problems that they're complaining about or assure them with facts that those problems don't exist. Beth, you mentioned protecting the integrity of our elections.
Mr. Shapiro, all comments have to be directed through the chair, please.
Mr. Chair. Beth mentioned about the importance of protecting the integrity of our elections. She was in charge of the election bureau during the Paper Gate scandal. She mentions about, she yaps about disenfranchisement, but when it comes to those Republican counties and Republican wards, sorry, Republican wards, there are just, you know, not enough paper there, just by coincidence. And in the Democrat areas, obviously, I'll have enough paper. While I obviously don't support the threats Beth has faced, these horrendous actions are already illegal under current law. Additional laws will not assist in prosecution, as evidenced by the DA's comments on this ordinance. Thankfully, the DA in this county takes threats seriously, enforces laws, unlike in other counties. I respectfully request for the council to vote against this thought crime legislation. This isn't the UK, this is America. If you want to live in a country like that, feel free to get out and go there. Stop trying to change this one. If election workers are getting PTSD despite no violence reported at the polls, our country is in far greater shape than we all think. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shapiro. Anybody else in the audience? Mr. Granteed?
Joe Granteed, Plains. I'll just make this real short and sweet. I've heard a lot of unfounded testimony or examples of testimony by people who aren't here, false accusations by people who are here. I hear a lot of feelings about. Everybody has a right to be safe, and I've worked the polls and have never felt unsafe at any poll. This originates from the incompetence of the last three elections. And I don't blame them for feeling uncomfortable with what they've done. But it's something that, it's their feelings that are being in question here. It's not actions by anyone else.
Thank you, Mr. Granteed. Anybody else in the audience? Ms. Edwards, did I see you had your hand up? You're good? Anybody else in the audience? All right, if there's anybody in the rotunda that would like to speak, I'm gonna start calling the people on the Zoom if you could just come in when you're prepared. Mr. Herring?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
All right, so just for everybody's situational awareness, Luzerne County has picked the president since 1932, besides one year, which was 2020, which is really interesting, but that's a topic for a different day. Again, I'm kind of appalled, just like I've heard some other folks talk about. I strongly, strongly, strongly oppose this. I don't even know if the word is ordinance. It doesn't even seem like it fits that criteria. What you're hearing tonight is theater and dramatics, plain and simple. That's all it is. And I want to give you some facts, like I always try and do. When we did an RTK against Luzerne County, I keep bringing this up, but it seems like it's falling on deaf ears. I really implore council to actually listen to me this time. We went to court. We went in front of a judge. This was not a public meeting. This was not some kind of theatrical performance. This was in a court of law. And Luzerne County sought to use an exemption under the safety and security provision for the right to know law. When Judge Lisa Gelb heard arguments in April of last year, the one thing that she said at that time was that she was pretty much hearing conjecture and speculation, or as Mr. Granteed said, somebody's feelings. She gave the county ten days to produce evidence, which again, has to go into a court of law, right? You can't just go there and say, "My feelings got hurt." In ten days, they provided not one speck of evidence, not one. And some of the folks that are speaking there tonight, giving you dramatic stories, had a chance to produce that evidence. If I saw evidence similar to what I heard tonight, I would have been the first person to say, "That's not right. Let's take a step back. Let's see what we can do." We were obviously always willing to work together, if there's legitimacy to it. But I'm just astonished. Every time I come to these meetings and hear this theatrical performance, that we can't just talk facts. There was absolutely no production of any evidence in 2023 related to the threats against election workers for Luzerne County. That is probably the only court case that we've had in the last two years that would be able to draw you to if there was, in fact, submissions of evidence for threats on our election workers. This ordinance is a joke. You can't even back it up with any kind of evidence. So again, it's a thought crime thing. It's garbage. And I'll say this, we have 200,000 registered voters in Luzerne County, I believe somewhere around that number. They petitioned, they brought a petition in tonight for 100 people and 30 people. That is not the will of the voters. You all were elected with a Republican majority by the will of the voters. That's the will of the voters. These petitions don't mean anything. Get some more people involved if you think you're gonna come with a petition and make any kind of progress. But 100 people is not cutting it. I really hope you guys don't fall for it. It's the very, very loud minority. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mike. Mike, could you state your full name and your municipality, please?
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening, council members. Michael Susak, Lathlin Borough. I'm the former elections director for Luzerne County. I've worked in elections administration for nearly 20 years. I currently serve as a national consultant supporting state and local officials around the country. I'm here today speaking only on my own behalf and in support of the ordinance. The threat environment facing election officials is real. It is severe. That, along with the turnover it has created, is one of, if not the most urgent issues facing election administrators on a national scale. You know, to suggest otherwise, I'd like to remind council that even if an individual hasn't experienced a threat directly or if Luzerne has not had a high-profile incident, that doesn't mean the issue isn't present. In fact, being flippant or dismissive about a public safety issue puts your employees and frankly, yourselves at risk as well. A lot of these threats are directed at elected officials as well. I want to show some important facts and statistics that highlight this issue. According to a 2024 survey of more than 900 election officials, 38% reported experiencing threats, harassment, or abuse since 2020. I would fall in that category, and I know that Beth in the audience has explained she is as well. 54% of officials expressed concerns for their own safety. And the chilling thing is 61% of those who did experience a threat, it happened in person. I just got back from a national conference and got to hear Detroit City Clerk Janice Winfrey talk about her experience. She was approached going for a walk in her neighborhood. The problem is so pervasive. The Department of Justice has a federal election task force. Posters are saying that, you know, there hasn't actually been evidence of this. There are actually several incarcerations, most recently. Andrew Nichols, serving 14 months for threatening the life of my friend and colleague, former Michigan Republican Clerk Tina Barton. And 70% say that is worsened since 2020. They want better funding. They want better legislation. This goes beyond staff. Very recently, the Mesa County Courts have been investigating, have been investigating the threats that they've been receiving. Department of Homeland Security has stepped in, identifying this as an issue with domestic violent extremists. And a little emotional because I do want to share a personal anecdote. One of my friends and colleagues, he's a Republican local election official, a dedicated family man, other side of the aisle from me, but a good guy, great guy, always works across the aisle. The threat that he received targeted not only him, but his children. It was a shooting threat. These are children who he used to bring into the office at Halloween. I've met them. I'm a father, too. And to hear some of the very flippant comments that have come to the dais is heartbreaking. So I do plead to council, take this issue seriously. This is a public safety issue. It's important for everybody to share their opinions here, but, you know, I know Chairman, you're a member of the first responder community. This is a, this is a public safety issue. If you think the ordinance needs amending or you want provisions added to ensure it doesn't infringe with free speech or legitimate role of watchers and observers, which it does not, that's one thing.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir.
All right, next up, we have Vivian Crywell-Lacena.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you, ma'am.
Hi. With the ordinance, the only thing I can say is, do we need it? Or, I mean, we have police that when threats are made, are the police being called? Are charges being filed? Are these people being arrested? You know, I hear a lot about unsafety and all this, but the thing is, is I know myself, if somebody's calling and threatening me, I'm picking up the phone and I'm calling my state police. I mean, it's the same with everybody else. Why are you not calling the police? That's what they're there for, is to protect you. I mean, I understand the safety measures that are being taken place at Plan Plaza and everything else, but just because somebody walks in, maybe somebody else says, "Shut up." You know, that's like, you know, or "Shut up," or I'll, you know, I'll smack you or something. That's just off. That's not, you know, like, it's small conversations. All I can say is really look at this before, you know, it causes more problems and puts us farther in the spotlight in the country that Luzerne County needs to start doing the digital and especially the election bureau. If you're being threatened, pick up that phone and call the police. I mean, if you can have a SWAT team there checking things out to make sure you're safe, there's no reason why a police officer can't come into that building, take a report, and follow up on it and bring charges. Thank you. That's all I have today. That's all I have today.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mark Schaefer.
Yeah, thank you, Mark Schaefer, Wilkes-Barre. I think we also have to keep in mind that this doesn't just elected officials or people at the bureau. This is also poll workers. We've had polling places closed because of the lack of poll workers, and we've seen a radical decrease in the number of people willing to come forward. I guess the people who are being flippant are just gonna say, "No one wants to be a poll worker anymore." But the reason is that people are getting threatened. Like, why else would we have this sudden rapid decline in poll workers not showing up in this context in which people are getting threats? The, it's not just our elected officials. Whatever you think of the Bureau of Elections, like, our poll workers aren't doing anything wrong but signing up to do a basic civic duty and in response, they're being threatened. And that's why we are struggling to man our poll book stations, why we're closing poll stations. It makes it not only, it's a basic human safety and human decency thing. It's also just about making sure our democratic elections work. So it's a pretty important point. I don't think we should take the view of others that say if someone threatens to punch someone, it's not a big deal. And as far as, like, call the police, I don't know what you expect the police to do when, are you film, are poll workers expected to film themselves all the time to get evidence that someone threatened them? It's ridiculous. The police can't do a thorough investigation on something someone said. You gotta be able to strengthen the law as it stands so we can actually protect our workers. As the speaker before the last said, if you have a problem with this, amend it, strengthen it in certain areas, that's fine. But to say we don't have a problem with threatening our workers is a serious lie, and I don't think we should take it seriously.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. I don't see any more hands up. Oh, okay, Ms. Edwards. I asked you before. It's okay.
About, oh, that's loud. About not having...
Ms. Edwards, your municipality, please.
Pardon?
Your municipality that you live in.
Oh, Swarsby.
Okay, thank you.
My polling place is small. And when I went in there, not this past election, the election before, I said, "What happened to my neighbors that work the polling place?" And my one neighbor actually walked in. I said, "How come you're not working the polls?" I said, "You've worked the polls for I don't know how many years." She told me that her and her mother were told that they weren't needed, and they stopped them from working the polls, and then they placed people that they wanted in there to work the polls. So I just want to let you know that.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. We have one more individual online. We have J.N. Sir, could you please state your full name and your municipality?
Yeah, my name is Jay Noder Tomaso from Wyoming. Can you hear me?
We can hear you, sir.
Okay, I just want to thank Councilmember Ms. Smith for proposing this common sense ordinance to protect election workers. The ordinance expands the coverage of those already protected to include more people involved in the elections process. Who could stand against that? This ordinance also recognizes new threats posed by nefarious election meddlers, by including dotzing and online threats. Who could stand against that? This ordinance will make it safer for election workers and potentially new workers to feel protected so that they continue to do this important work. We've lost so many good people because of the election denial crowd who have harassed and continue to peddle lies and disenfranchisement in the election process. Who could stand against that? I'll tell you who. The same group who almost recently caused so much fear and paranoia about drop boxes that our county manager decided to unilaterally surrender due to threats by those trying to suppress the vote. The same group who now hypocritically say that there is nothing to worry about and deny that many election volunteers actually do have because of their election lies. The same people who you can be sure will be causing problems at voting places next month if they don't like the results that are turning out. Anyone remember our very own Alyssa Lucero, who did just this in the last election and for some reason is still on the Board of Elections? The same people who on their conspiracy theory social media page, I think it's called CAP, Citizens Against Pennsylvanians, or something like that, are also peddling every conspiracy theory currently in circulation, including Democrats are creating hurricanes to hurt red states, and the military is destroying donation sites in North Carolina, and pictures of Elon Musk and Trump knee-deep in floodwaters helping victims, telling people not to trust FEMA and the Red Cross, and the list just goes on and on. These are the same people who have no problem with the January 6th insurrection and the 2020 election was rigged, some of who have spoken at the very last meeting were among those who entered the Capitol that day and their supporters. So because of this ongoing delusion, we are brought here again today to battle for voting rights and common sense against election deniers. Make no mistake, the very people who harass election workers are the very same people who want them to remain unprotected. Make no mistake, the people here who are against protecting election workers do not accept the results of elections unless they like the results. Don't fall for the hypocrisy. Do the right thing, stand up for democracy, and take these simple, common sense measures to protect those who care enough to show up and engage in democracy in meaningful ways. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, I don't see anybody else for public comment. Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, public hearing is adjourned. We'll move right into the voting session if that's okay with everybody. All right, we already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Hawes?
Mr. Haas?
Mr. Haas, we're in roll call.
Here.
Mr. Chris, or Ms. Krasinski? Mr. Lescavage? Ms. McDermott?
Here.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson? Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
10 of 11 present?
Before we go any further, Attorney Skene, can you announce our executive session? I know it's on the paper.
Right. Prior to the meeting tonight, we had an executive session where we discussed litigation matters, which will be coming before counsel today. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have two, oh, I forgot about it. I'll read it at the end. Or we did during public, I'll read it at public comment. Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay. That's my fault. All right, we have two proclamations. First is for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Whereas across our county and here in the county of Luzerne, across our country and here in the county of Luzerne, domestic violence traumatizes victims, endangers children, harms families, affects workplaces, threatens communities, and crosses all racial, social, economic, and cultural boundaries. And whereas it is the goal of the county of Luzerne to reduce the incidents and the effects of domestic violence on its citizens, and to increase public awareness of this problem. And whereas the county of Luzerne urges all citizens to recognize the epidemic of domestic violence and to join in support of the programs which help alleviate domestic violence. And whereas the county of Luzerne supports the coordinated and knowledgeable response of instances of domestic violence by first responders, service providers such as the Domestic Violence Service Center and the Criminal Justice System. Now therefore, we, the Luzerne County Council, do hereby acknowledge the problem of domestic violence, appreciate the difficult yet outstanding work which responders accomplish in fighting the problem, urge all residents of Luzerne County to be aware of the problem of domestic violence and its impact on our daily lives, and proclaim the month of October in the year 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Luzerne County. Thank you. Is there anybody here to collect, or are we just? Okay, we'll keep it. Next, we have a proclamation for the Unico Wilkes-Barre Chapter for Italian-American Heritage Month. Whereas October is recognized as Italian-American Heritage Month by the United States Congress, the President, and numerous other governments throughout the country. Whereas Italian-American Heritage Month is set to coincide with Columbus Day, a holiday meant to celebrate Christopher Columbus's voyage to America, which remains a source of pride for many Italian-Americans. Italian-Americans have made numerous lasting impacts on the world from the invention of the telephone by Antonio Meucci and discovers in nuclear physics by Enrico Fermi, to the shaping of American entertainment with individuals like Frank Sinatra, Dean Martin, Francis Ford Coppola, and Martin Scorsese, to major sports figures in Vince Lombardi, Joe DiMaggio, Joe Paterno, and more locally Charlie Trippi. And whereas Luzerne County has an active and significant population of Italian-American citizens who take pride in their heritage and give back to the community in many ways. And whereas Unico is an Italian-American service organization that is active in Luzerne County. And whereas the acronym Unico stands for unity, neighborliness, integrity, charity, and opportunity. And whereas the Wilkes-Barre Chapter of Unico has engaged in numerous philanthropic activities throughout the area, particularly the Unico Football Game, Miss Unico Pageant, volunteering at the St. Vincent de Paul Soup Kitchen, annual scholarship dinner, and numerous other events. Whereas Unico's motto of service above serf, uh, service above self has guided the organization in its desire to serve the community and bring continued pride to those of Italian descent in America. Now therefore, we, the Luzerne County Council, do hereby proclaim October as Italian-American Heritage Month in recognition of the hard work and dedication of those with Italian roots who have made a lasting positive impact in Luzerne County and all throughout the United States. Thank you. All right, next up, we will have, are there any deletions from the voting session agenda? Is there a motion to adopt?
Show move.
Motion to the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting agenda is adopted. We'll now have public comment on agenda items only. I actually do have an email that it's for an agenda item, but it was, it was, it should have been read also at the public hearing, so I'll read it now. This is from Claudia Glennon from Salem Township. Says, I was listening to a story on the radio today about an upcoming musical performance, "We the People," and how music brings us together, uniting us for the common good through finding common ground. The term and thus history of common ground in creation of our nation encompasses what was literally common ground in our towns, cities, and other communal areas. This was a public space owned by no one entity but set aside for the benefit and use of all. Initially, these common grounds provided for the grazing of farm animals. Later, they became recreational settings. Reflect, if you will, for a moment on one such historical area, the Boston Commons. For me, the Election Worker Protection Ordinance is a wonderful extension of this value of common ground for the good and benefit of everyone in our community. It offers the opportunity for Luzerne County to be a positive example of community and government uniting for the common good and setting the precedent for other counties in our Commonwealth to follow. This ordinance highlights our concern for the safety of all of our election personnel, employees, and volunteers, further emphasizing our commitment to election integrity and to ensuring safe and secure elections. I urge the county council to unanimously pass this ordinance and let Luzerne County ring that bell of liberty for all. Claudia Glennon. Anybody for public comment in the audience? For agenda items only. Oh, I have some slips, actually. All right, Anthony Gallagher? Or is that for a non, this is for a non-agenda item?
Robin Kochan, Dallas Township. This is particularly about Agenda Item Number Two for the French lawsuit. Luzerne County has had several years to clean up its tarnished record of corruption and voter disenfranchisement, but instead chooses to be non-transparent and waste taxpayer money embroiled in lawsuit after lawsuit, such as Judicial Watch suing to clean, suing to clean up our voter rolls and French versus Luzerne County over voter disenfranchisement. How can you possibly expect voters to trust the elections when you repeatedly fight our right to knows, obfuscate investigations, don't review surveillance footage, or check for proper authorizations for submitting multiple ballots? Again and again, you continue to ignore our rights for fair elections by disenfranchising legal voters and forcing drop boxes in our county that only deplete resources and are documented for fraud. Adopting the settlement in French versus Luzerne County is a small step in the right direction, but you will need to work overtime to undo the chaos already in motion for our upcoming November 5th election. That's a sad state of affairs. And as I previously commented, please do not pass the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kochan. Mr. Knapp, would you like to speak again? No?
Regards to seven, Orden Seven?
Number seven?
Yeah.
Yeah, the ordinance. You can, you can, yeah.
Thanks, Knapp from Nanticoke. And thank you, council individuals and Romelda Crocamo. I'm off script now. I just wanted to, again, drive home the legislation branch. That's council of, the county, and Section 2 of 17 Limitations, Non-Interference in the Home Rule Charter. And it states, no member or of county council or committee or shall publicly or privately give directions, orders to the county manager, any employee of the executive branch, the Controller, District Attorney, or any employee of their office. This is the law. You have to go, stand by the Home Rule Charter. And last but not least, in 2023, somebody had issued me from the Bureau of Elections, I'm not going to mention names. I just want to tell you, the lackadaisical skills that were shown, a Poll Watcher certificate. I asked for four and five. Poll Watcher certificates are a legal document. And the fifth one that was issued to me by a certain person in the Bureau of Elections, this Poll Watcher was opposing my, my party. The person was opposite of my party. Now, I mean, if they didn't have some kind of fail check method of checking the party of those individuals, believe me, they'll do it for when you bring petitions to get in, into office regarding, for running for office. I, I felt that it was very, very, very bad workmanship, and that's, that's the end of it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Knapp. Mr. Fellerman?
Good evening. Greg Fellerman from Harvey's Lake. My question is, if you are going to allow us to discuss the agenda item, I will waive my public speaking time. If not,
Yeah.
I will take, I'll do it now.
Yeah, we'll, we'll give you an opportunity to speak on the, the ARPA item when you're, when you're, when, when we come to it.
Thank you.
Mr. Newman? I think he's outside.
Good evening. Larry Newman, Wilkes-Barre. And I would have the same question as Mr. Fellerman.
Yeah, that's correct. If you, yeah, if you'd like an opportunity, we'll give you the opportunity at, at the time when we are voting. We'll have discussion.
Great, thank you.
All right, yep, no problem, Mr. Newman. Anybody else for public comment in the audience?
Good evening, counsel. Number two is my concern for French versus, or French and Reese versus Luzerne County. That settlement is $15,000 per person because of the Paper Gate issue. It's amazing to me that we only had two people file a lawsuit against the county for that issue. We've had a lot of people disenfranchised due to Paper Gate. These two people are going to get money for the county. I would strongly urge counsel not to adopt that, pay that money out. Paper Gate was a pretty instrumental thing in this county. We even had people had to go to Congress to testify about Paper Gate. The person sitting in the audience was the director at the time. We had a lawsuit just filed just recently against our county manager that was instituted by the person sitting in the audience. The Board of Elections has been a vehicle for all of these things. I think it's time we make a stand and make people accountable for these things. Vote no on that ordinance, please. Number seven, vote no on that ordinance as well. I find it very rich that people stand at this podium and talk about how the Bureau of Elections is the reason why we have violence in this county. What a stretch that is. Really? You have a staff of six people in that bureau working 20, almost 20 hours a day to make an election work, and we're going to accuse them of causing violence in the county? Let's look at the national level. Let's look at what's coming from the candidates, both sides. Trump, Harris, go down the list. We have a toxic environment. Most of the people in this room can't even talk to a family member about elections because it's so toxic. Are we going to make ordinances that we can't talk to our family members? I sat at the table today, people coming down that were irate because they didn't think they're, we had to wait 15 minutes to vote today. All upset. Really? This is the environment we live in. It's not because of the Bureau of Elections. It's because of people in general have absolutely no patience, no respect for their fellow man. We really need to turn our country around. Get a little bit of religion. Get something in your life, for goodness sake. This is ridiculous. People fight about the dumbest stuff. We fight about drop boxes when we have an election going on that's contentious at best. But I just sat here and I was just amazed at people that are going to blame six people in the Bureau of Elections for, because they can't run the elections correctly. Really? Because your needs aren't met? Come on, people. Let's just get a grip on life in general and stop with the petty fighting and start working together to make things better. Number, number five, obviously, I think we should take that money and give it back to the taxpayers as a tax break, that UDAG money. I said that before. Take that $3 million we appropriated out of UDAG and give it to, back to the people as a tax break, a one-time tax break. Mr. Haas brought that up before. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Next up, Mr. Raybo.
Good evening. Mark Raybo, Hazelton. To follow up with what Controller Griffith said, I agree on number two with respect to that, even though it should be a lot of more, a lot more people filing litigation because of the fact that there were a lot, lot of, happened to be Republican voters that was disenfranchised due to the person, the acting director at the time, who had no experience, the Kathy Buckvar of Luzerne County. And I find it, you know, almost cosmic irony that the previous director to her called in, who helped her get the job along with Mr. Chairman, your predecessor, who was the former county council chair because she went to college together with the former director at the time. Coincidences, coincidences here. Find it interesting. So that being said, and this goes to also the proposed ordinance. Once again, how is this ordinance going to preserve, protect, defend the integrity of our elections when it comes to harassment and the drop boxes? Because how's the insurance provider going to protect that if there's nothing solidified based on, in terms of statutory mandates or past practices in terms of previous litigation or case law? And as far as the UDAG money goes, as the person who found the UDAG money, I think that that should be preserved for infrastructure purposes and not to be continued on kicking the can down the road for a pet project just because amateur hour wannabe developers can't get their act together. I mean, this is just obscene right now to keep letting this go on. And with all due respect to the Vice Chair, Mr. Lescavage, I agree that we should have more economic development, not less. But you gotta pick, you, you can't be picking winners and losers, and you have to make sure everything's all together. They had their chance to present their lender, the lenders, and they did present the, make the presentation. What happened? Why haven't they followed through with what they stated here previously? I guess we'll find out. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to do it twice.
It was just, it was checked. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malcomus. Sorry about that. Okay. Anybody else in the audience for public comment? Ms. Mirolovich? And then, you're next, sir.
I prefer either Mrs. Mirolovich or Ms. Hoffman-Mirolovich, just so you know.
I apologize.
Thank you. Fairview Township, as you know. I would like to put out, put out a few things because there's been some misinformation given during public comment during the hearing. First thing, this does not, is not contrary to Pennsylvania state law. Similar ordinance was also passed by a home rule county in Philadelphia. So ordinance number seven for worker, election worker protection, that is okay in that sense. Secondly, a lot of, has come up about candidates and about fellow candidates and organizations. I'll be honest, just like Mr. Fitzgerald, I have been threatened, but I'm not talking about that here. This is specifically for our election workers. We have lost institutional knowledge through the years because people don't want to continue as election workers. I am one of those people who testified in front of Congress in March of 2023 and said just that. This ordinance is strictly to protect those people so that we can have more across all parties come and be willing to be election workers. They are not just public servants. These are people volunteering their time. And if they fear for their lives, or they fear that they're threatened or their families, we need to do something about it. And there is enough precedent across the United States and multiple municipalities that have passed similar ordinances. And last but not least, I find it very rich that somebody who came up for public comment earlier is now under investigation in Lackawanna County for threatening a county commissioner. So just so you know, like, that came out. And they've been talking the whole time, even though we're sitting here listening and trying to listen to all the sizes we always do. But my point is, this is needed. If it weren't needed, then why since 2019, pre-mail-in ballots, pre-drop boxes, were we losing this institutional knowledge? We know that we need something. There's a reason that we've come to you to ask that you pass Ms. Smith's ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience, public comment? Oh, sir, you're next. State your name and municipality, please. And you're, you're looking to speak on an agenda item?
The funding for the Riverfront.
That's going to be at the, the end of the meeting.
Yeah, what, at what time will that be? I just don't.
Oh, was it for the park, the ARPA funding, you mean?
Yeah.
Oh, go ahead. I apologize.
Yeah. I'm Dr. Jerry Reisinger from Kingston, and I've been working on the Riverfront since 1986 with the Susquehanna River Watch and Congressman Kandjurski, President Clinton, Bruce Babbitt, the federal government. And we've completed nine successful Riverfront projects in Pennsylvania. And we are excited to hear about the funding for Nesbit and Kirby Park and Riverbend Park. And we approached Representative Aaron Coffers about getting involved in our team of architects and landscape architects, and never heard back from them and basically- team of architects and landscape architects and never heard back from them. And basically, we heard that it was going through the Jewish Community Center Alliance. And then, no more communication. So, I read in the paper that the funding is going to be moved to some other projects. And for some reason, there was no master plan worked on. And I work with the Haudenosaunee Nation. All these sites that you're talking about are protected by federal law. They're all sacred sites and are federally funded to be developed. That's how we've had nine successful projects. And so, you know, we're living in the Kingston community with a filthy Kirby Riverbend Park. I've worked five, six years with the city of Wolksburg to finally clean up the mess over there and all the people that have died over there and been raped and calling it a natural area. It's totally insane because it's a national historic site designed by Frederick Law Olmsted Jr. And also, you have the Market Street Memorial Bridge there, which is a memorial to the veterans of World War I. And it's filthy. It's a filthy bridge. The arch is underneath full of the worst graffiti. And it's an entryway. It's the most criminal zone in the whole community. Okay? I lived there. I walk my dogs there every day. It's filthy. I used to have four schools rowing here at one time, funded by Alan Kirby, because he knew I wanted, I wanted to get Kirby Park cleaned up for my rowing program. And all my equipment was thrown in the river one night, and my office was burned. All right? So, I had to move my rowing program to Harvey Slate because of the filth and crime in that Kirby Riverbend Park, Riverbend Park. And I think that's the most important funding for this community, is to clean those parks up, especially the flood obstruction that it creates, all the overgrowth and debris and sediment in that area. And I just really appalled that we haven't used this money to clean it up. And I like to offer our services to keep the money involved in the project and find out basically who's in charge of that project. Do you know? Do you know who has the money? Who's, who's, who's the committee that's ordering the master plan to be developed?
We're going to have information about that in the, further in this meeting, sir.
Further?
Yeah.
You couldn't give it to me now?
Well, we're going to have, we're going to have the architects of the plan will be speaking.
Okay, great.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. Anybody else for public comment? Mr. Shapiro?
Gavi Shapiro, Kingston. I'd like to comment on the comment of the woman who previously spoke, whose name I don't want to say because I do not want to mistakenly mess it up because she may feel intimidated. And in case she's an election worker, I might be facing up to 90 days in prison. She had mentioned that someone is under investigation for threatening someone, an official in Lackawanna County currently, who spoke here previously. If that's true, and in Lackawanna County, they don't have this ordinance passed, it's clear that current law, it's clear the current, it's clear the current laws are sufficient to protect against legitimate threats and intimidation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shapiro. Anybody else for public comment in the audience? Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yeah, I just want to talk about that ordinance again. But when I was talking earlier today, I wasn't talking about, as far as, I'm just explaining what can be solved. So, when another gentleman came up and said that to blame the Bureau on it or individuals, that wasn't true. That was not the intent. I was just saying, this is the consequences of ballots being in the dumpster, paper gate, not releasing video. There's a lot of things that are just, people feel oppressed. I mean, some of the people I love the most, Martin Luther King, Gandhi, when people feel under the thumb or oppressed, or you're trying to hold them down, it's human nature. I'm not saying you should do it, or it's right. I'm just letting you know, that's human nature. So, to solve that is to work with everybody, be honest, have integrity, and then look at a problem and solve it. If we don't have enough staff, put more money in the budget. Everybody will love that. If we have too many Republicans in one place and the Democrats don't feel that there's enough Democrats, make it 50-50. I said it in Congress, I said it in Congress two years ago. What we need to do is educate. We need to always recruit. We have to be prepared, and we have to be transparent. Nothing's changed. If we do that, we're all not here. We're not here. We don't need an ordinance. Everything will go away as long as we do our job and we feel that it's fair elections and everybody gets a fair shake. That's all I said. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Anybody else in the audience for public comment? Mr. Granteed?
Joe Granteed, Plains Township. Just want to make my feelings known on some of the things that I'm afraid of. I'm afraid of our president who threatened us with F-16s. I'm also afraid of the Justice Department who comes after parents when they stick up for their, for their children. There's a woman named Tina Peters who tried to expose election fraud in Colorado who got nine years in prison. I'm afraid of something like that. We've got 15 million illegal aliens in this country for the last three and a half years. If you're not afraid to walk the streets, there's something wrong with you. We've got grandmothers in prison for praying at abortion clinics. These are the things that I feel are threats.
Thank you, Mr. Granteed. Anybody else in the audience for public comment? All right. Anybody on the Zoom? If there's anybody in the rotunda that would like to come and speak, I'm going to call on some people in the Zoom first. Mr. Notor Tomaso, I apologize if I said your name incorrectly.
No problem. Jay Notor Tomaso here. I just need to comment on, I think it's highly inappropriate and misogynist for Mr. Shapiro to degrade Ms. Hoffman-Merilovich with an inappropriate comment about her being insulted by him saying her name incorrectly. I think that that should be stricken from the record, and he should apologize.
Is that the end of your comments, sir? Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Mr. Herring?
Good evening, Ben Herring-Durier. So, if you think that, and this is about the ordinance for the, whatever you want to call it. So, Mr. Haas, when he ran for this office, the flyers were already kind of mentioned tonight. Very, you know, they weren't truthful at all, but of course, they attacked him. They attacked him personally. We even heard all the buzzwords tonight. The bingo card is out again, you know, insurrectionist, racist, homophobe, this, that, this, any, you know, phobia that you can come up with. But folks, let's, let's talk reality once again and get out of this theatrical environment. The people constantly who are attacked are conservatives. Let's just be real about that. Again, I've already, I've already talked about the court hearing and what was actually presented as evidence. So, that, done mentioning that. But when it comes to these meetings, we try and bring facts, and we try and bring, you know, a point of view to counsel as the public because that's our job, is to, you know, present issues to you guys, and you guys vote on it. But I don't hear too often that somebody that is of a conservative mindset gets up there and just goes, you know, scorched earth, attacks somebody of the other side. But this happens constantly to us. There's a reason that President Donald Trump has been the attempted assassination twice. I think Mr. Griffith said it perfectly tonight. We're not going to fix the toxicity in this country. It is out there, but it's also perpetuated by meetings like tonight where you have consistently people calling each other names and like to get their last two cents in there. I want to talk about the group that's behind that. I mean, it's a reality. Action Together NEPA, In This Together NEPA, United for Luzerne. It's the three-headed monster. They're all in it together. The ordinance that is being proposed is brought by somebody that's part of that group of people. And I bring that up because I think it's really, really important. If Luzerne County wants to turn into San Francisco, California, keep letting them get their way because they're going to push a very, very, very far-left progressive agenda on this county. They are fully behind what's going on here tonight. They were fully behind the Dropbox debacle that we ran into. Again, it's all about election integrity and all that stuff if it fits their agenda. It's for people that support who they want. It's not for the collective good of the community. And I'm, and I'm sick and tired of hearing this will of the voters thing. You guys were elected by the will of the voters. Let's remind that again. And this election next year is going to be a referendum if we don't start to stick to our values and stop catering to the very, very, very loud minority. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark Schaefer?
Yeah, I think Betty just demonstrated a brilliant example of irony. He's talking about Action Together being a secret group that's like behind everything when his group is the one that's bringing all these people here tonight who are, as the last in-person speaker said, spouting just the most ridiculous things to be afraid of, that the Department of Justice is going to come get him, that Biden's going to bomb him with an F-16. Ooh. This is the kind of conspiracy theories that him and his people promote, and it's why this needs to, this ordinance needs to exist. Ordinance number seven, because these people are spreading theories, you heard it tonight, that apparently the loss of paper was an evil plot to stop Republicans from voting, that anytime there's an error, it's always just to hurt Republicans. So, they spread these theories, and then, as Mr. Fitzgerald said, what do you think happens? The people who they're spreading conspiracy theories to pop off and give threats to election workers, and that is a problem. I don't understand the concept of looking at election workers being threatened and seeing, saying like Mr. Fitzgerald did, oh, that's their fault for behaving improperly. When you behave improperly, bad things happen. We need, when bad things happen, there need to be consequences. Mr. Herring and others talk about how we're going to become San Francisco or whatever. We will if we don't put consequences to people's bad actions. That's exactly what they say is happening in San Francisco, that no one gets punished for a crime. This ordinance is to punish people when they commit crimes. When people threaten election workers, when they dox people, they should face consequences. This is simply just people having consequences for their actions. And again, I agree with Mr. Griffith. We're not going to solve any of these problems with this ordinance in and of itself. It's a problem with our community and with our country. But when people are popping off and behaving inappropriately like this, there needs to be consequences. And that's what this ordinance does. If you want to tap down on the hatred and, and the negative consequences, part of it is putting people who get out of line into punishment. If you threaten someone, there should be consequences. I can't believe I have to say that out loud. Please vote for this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. All right. I don't see anybody else on the Zoom. All right, moving on. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the September 24th, 2024 voting session?
Second.
All in favor?
Opposed.
Opposed. Meetings are approved. Moving on into the agenda. Number one, introduction of the ordinance adopting the 2025 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County. Yes, it's automatically introduced, but I'm sure Manager Crocamo has some awesome things to say about our budget.
Jim Brizina told me I only have two minutes, so. And I always listen to what Jim Brizina says. Ladies and gentlemen, esteemed members of County Council and valued citizens of our community, it is with great pride that I introduce the ordinance adopting the 2025 fiscal year budget for Luzerne County. Today, I stand before you with great pride and optimism as we introduce the 2025 budget, which not only preserves our commitment to fiscal responsibility, but also ensures that we maintain the high level of service our residents deserve, all without increasing taxes. First and foremost, I want to extend my heartfelt gratitude to our dedicated Budget Committee. Mary Rozell, the Division Head of Budget and Finance, Tom Sikola, member of our Controller's Office, Mark Majikis, a member of our Community Development Department, and Jonathan Bates, member of the Fiscal Department of Mental Health, and Sandra Ross, also a member of our Budget and Finance Office. Their tireless efforts, keen insights, and unwavering commitment to our community have been instrumental in crafting a budget that reflects both our needs and our values. Thank you for your hard work, collaboration, and diligence throughout this process. As we present this lean budget, I want to emphasize that it is not only just about numbers. It's about a true commitment to the people that we serve. This budget is a reflection of our priorities, priorities that focus on reducing expenses while ensuring that essential services remain intact. We understand the challenges our residents face, and we are dedicated to finding innovative solutions that do not compromise the quality of life in our county. In this budget, we have made strategic adjustments that allow us to streamline operations and cut unnecessary costs. By carefully reviewing each line item, we have identified areas where efficiencies can be gained, ensuring that every dollar spent is a dollar working towards the betterment of our county. I want to assure all of you that our core services, public safety, infrastructure, and community programs will remain fully funded. We are committed to continuing our programs that support our families, protect our neighborhoods, and enhance the quality of life for all of our residents. As we move forward, together, I am confident that this budget will not only meet the immediate needs of our county, but also will lay the groundwork for future growth and stability. Together, we will continue to build a brighter future for all residents of Luzerne County. So, thank you once again to the Budget Committee and to all of you for your continued support and engagement. Let us embrace this opportunity to move forward together, united in our mission to serve Luzerne County effectively and responsibly. And right now, it is my distinct honor to bring Mary Rozell to the podium.
Thank you. I just want to take a minute to also thank Mark, Tom, Jonathan, and Sandra for their hard work in helping to arrive at the budget that has been presented here tonight. Additionally, I want to thank all the division heads and department heads who have worked with us in helping to maximize our revenues and minimize our expenses. We've certainly challenged them in all the meetings that we had with them, and they've really been great in seeing how we can all work together to, again, help us reach our goals and to make sure that we can do things better and more efficiently. I appreciate everyone's commitment to helping us reach our goals, as I said, and I look forward to working with counsel over the next month and a half to answer any questions that you may have and to help identify any additional opportunities that, you know, we want to discuss. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rozell. All right. Number two, motion to adopt the resolution approving the settlement of pending litigation in the matter of William French and Melinda Ann Reese versus Luzerne County. There's a motion?
Second.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Haas?
I can't support this. I think this is, emanates from the incompetence of the Director of Elections at that time.
Ms. Kryshinowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavich?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Given everything that we know and given everything that we could stand to face, I have to vote yes.
Yes, you said?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
If eight yes, two no, it passes.
Thank you. Number three, motion to adopt the resolution approving the settlement of pending litigation in the matter of Melanie J. Randall versus Luzerne County.
So moved.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Roll call.
Ms. Kryshenovsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Eight yes, two no. It passes.
Okay. Number four, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for the Jewish Community Alliance of Northeast Pennsylvania.
So moved.
Okay, there's a second. Now, two things. First, by voting yes, just so councils aware, you're voting to deobligate the funds for both number four and number five.
How much, Mr. Chairman?
Well, so, okay, so I'm getting to that. That's my next mic. So I'd like to make an amendment to number four, if that's okay. I do have some language here. And I think before I make the amendment, actually, maybe we can have the individuals come and speak about that, if that's okay with everybody. Okay, Mr. Fellerman? All right.
Hi, my name's Greg Fellerman. I'm from Harvey's Lake. I'm the current president of Jewish Community Center. We were awarded this grant, if you remember, originally it was a 13.5 million award. It was worked down to 2 million. We are in the process of working through that with you, but I think, listening to Ramil, that it might be best if I let our engineer discuss the plan, who is Jim Brizina, who is, you may all know, is running the riverfront. He's done the levy. He's probably one of the most knowledgeable guys in northeastern Pia on this issue. So I'm going to turn the floor to him. He can explain what we're doing and the requests, but I think, once he's done, and with the proposed amendment, you'll be happy with where we're at.
Mr. Brizina.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of council. It's a pleasure to be back in these halls. It has been a little while, but I have spent an awful lot of time here. We have a presentation that we want to go through because it was in 2023 that you awarded this project, and quite some time has passed, and I want to give you a little bit of history regarding the project itself. So the plan that was submitted and was being moved forward was the concept plan that was completed by Sasaki Engineers in 2005. It was, as I said, a concept plan. This is the entire concept plan. So it was a 20,000-foot queue of what-if, and what can we do to the west side of the river? And it was developed during the timeframe that work was beginning on the River Common. The project addresses three parks on the west side of the river. Kirby Park on both the land side and the riverside, Nesbit Park that sits between the two bridges, and finally, Kingston has Riverbend Park that runs from the North Street Bridge all the way up to the bend at the Cross Valley Expressway. This plan was developed based on master plans that were created back in 1995 and 1997. So they were approximately plans that were 30 years old, and now we have a plan that is approximately 20 years old. The total improvements that were anticipated in this concept plan was 13 and a half million dollars' worth of work, and that was in 2,005 dollars. So let's take a look at the original project scope. It talked about doing two things. The first was to design and construct improvements to include tree removal and site clearing, removal existing worn infrastructure, erosion and sedimentation controls, pond upgrades, construction of trails, fountain and water quality improvements, pedestrian safety lighting, site furnishings, utility upgrades, security measures, and signage. And then the second part of the project was to design only the balance of the projects that were identified in that concept plan and put them on the shelf with the hope of future funding. It was a $2 million award, and it had a completion date of June 30th, 2024. So a couple of things happened, and if we can get to the next slide. The, in 2023, we had discussions with the Jewish Community Center, and I gave them a little thought of what has happened since this thing was developed. Much has changed along the Susquehanna River, the biggest thing being the change that we saw after 2018 when we had the ice jam. And I saw very heavy construction on the River Common being damaged by the ice in that January event. So we decided, and I suggested to them, that what they do is concentrate their efforts on the land side and do the improvements there, and they'll only do primitive-type improvements of wide paths and clearing areas that people could walk if they so desired. The second thing I suggested was that we develop a DCNR, Pennsylvania DCNR, approved master plan. And the benefit of doing a master plan rather than plans on a shelf is that with the master plan, it provides the opportunity for the, whomever the project sponsor would be at that point, to secure state funding on these projects in the amount of 50%. And so we then went through and looked and kept the project cost at $2 million, but looked to move the construction at that point back to the end of 2025. So now let's go through the history very quickly here. So the first thing is, county awarded the project in 2023 in April. July, the county approves the advanced funding of $2 million. And then in July of 2023, the JCC submits this proposed change to the county and to booth to make the change, primarily, the construction stayed the same, but to change it to a master plan rather than construction, just design drawings. The booth replied that they would review and submit the plans to the board for approval. However, at that point in time, in August of 2023, and July of 2023, you didn't have a finalized plan addressing the steps necessary to make the changes for budget, change of contact people, and change of scope. So as we continue through this in our history, in July 21st, we did get a letter indicating that this is the guidance effective the 21st of July 2023, that they are working with council and the county manager to verify the process, and they anticipate a decision and a resolution of this issue in August of 2023. Unfortunately, nothing further, no further contact occurred between the county booth and the JCC. JCC assumed that the project was approved and continued down that path. About the same time, the JCC had changes in some of their staffing, so the project sat idle. And it wasn't until February of '24 that they advertised for a project manager. I responded to that and was awarded that contract in April of that year. In March of 2024, Wilkes-Barre City began a project in Kirby Park to construct an ADA pathway around the pond in the park. And they moved forward with this project with the understanding that the county ARPA funds would be used by the JCC to work in conjunction with that. We then had several meetings with booth about the need for a time extension. We submitted that, this council approved that change to September 30th of 2025. And then in June of 2024, we requested proposals from engineering and planning consultants, and around the same time, the JCC was having an audit done. And the concern was raised by the auditors for the JCC is, how do you address a single audit when you are doing work, but you do not have an asset at the end of it, because it is Wilkes-Barre City property when it's done? So they had concerns, and we started to work through that. We had discussions with the county. And then in the proposals that were out on the street, the end of June, they were due. We directly notified more than a dozen firms, and we received no proposals. That was kind of shocking to me. We did ask some of the firms, and they were kind of confused about the relationship of the JCC requesting work on public lands. So they veered away from the project. So we then taught, the JCC board met, had a discussion, and brainstormed ideas, and went back to the city of Wilkes-Barre to see if they would take on the responsibility for liability, for funding overruns, for all of those aspects of the project. And the JCC then provided an agreement to the county that was signed by both of those parties. So that gets us to where we were earlier this summer. So the issues that we have are that the JCC had concerns about their audit capability, the liability, and financial risks. The county was concerned that the change in the project would require new action by the council to reauthorize it in its entirety. There was concern about the ability now to complete the project in advance of the December 2026 deadline. There was the failure of the processing of the scope change back in 2023. There was a lack of response from the consultants. There were modifications that would be needed to make the agreement between the city and the JCC compliant with ARPA regulations. And again, the Wilkes-Barre City work that was done in 2024 was built as a direct couple of the work that was being planned for this project, and the intent was to look to use that as the project 5% match for the project for the JCC. So we've brainstormed, we've talked, and we've come up what we believe is a new project that makes the most sense. That is, that we're going to do our work in the upland section of Kirby and concentrate our efforts around the pond, doing work on the pond edge. We're going to upgrade the fountain and do water quality improvements. We're going to do pedestrian and safety lighting around the pond. We'll do site furnishings, utility upgrades, and signage, and we're going to complete a DCNR compliant master plan. The estimated cost of this project is 1.1 million dollars, and we believe that the project can be completed by December 31st of 2025. So the conclusions that we've developed are that the project is consistent, still with the original project intent, and no new authorization is required by council to move forward. We believe that the proposed project can be completed well in advance of the December 26 deadline. If the agreement between the city and the JCC is deemed acceptable and some pen and ink changes are made to comply with the ARPA language, that will address their concerns. If the city project is allowed to serve as the 5% match, again, that's another piece of the puzzle that gets solved. The proposed project will reduce the overall project cost, and a budget revision will be necessary. And finally, the delays in the project this summer now require us to kick the project down from September to a completion date in December of 2025. So what I believe the required actions that are necessary on council's part are, number one, direct booth to review the agreement between the JCC and the city, so that we include all of the necessary ARPA language, that you accept the Wilkes-Barre City project for the ADA pathway around the pool as an acceptable 5% match for the project. Those project costs were well in excess of $200,000 that they put into that, that you approve a budget revision, reducing the project to 1.1 million dollars, and that you approve a time extension to December 31st of 2025 for the project. And then I have some additional backup information, but if you have any questions, I'll be glad to address them for you.
Council members, any questions? Mr. Thornton?
Thank you, Mr. Brizina, for a very clear, concise presentation, laying it out in this fashion is very helpful for everybody here around the table. There were a lot of questions from everybody the past two months on this, so now it's all clear and in focus for me, anyway. But just one quick question. Can you explain, because I just don't know what the benefit is to complete a DCNR-compliant master plan?
Number one, I showed you that flimsy package of paper that's probably about the same size as, that was the concept plan. A master plan is a deeply involved project that looks at all of the existing infrastructure. There is a major public participation component that we can get views of the public as to what types of things they would see on all of those. It addresses operation and maintenance costs, security costs, and the main portion is that it allows whomever is applying as a public entity to apply for DCNR funding, which provides 50% of project costs.
And I would imagine DCNR would require to look at some sort of master plan that was developed.
We have to, in order to get into the game, you got to have the plan.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council members? Mr. Haas?
Hi, Mr. Brizina. Welcome back. Good to see you.
Thank you.
So can you, can you explain to council what, what areas of this plan, of this revisation plan of the waterfront and the pond there in Wilkes-Barre and Kirby Park, what was scaled back? So the original ask was $2 million, now we're down to 1.1. Can you elaborate on that?
Sure. A couple of things happened. Number one is, there was a major expenditure for tree clearing and site clearing, several hundred thousand dollars. There was about $200,000 worth of work that was involved on the construction of new pathways and trails through the park. The pond had a solution that was extremely expensive. We've worked with the Conservation District over the past several weeks and have been able to scale that back dramatically. So those are the three major components. Obviously, professional costs drop as well, because we have a smaller project, the engineering fees and the construction inspection fees drop as well.
Thank you for that. So, because I'm looking at the picture here, it's a wonderful picture of the waterfront, goes all the way up past the JCC, it looks like to me. So do we mean to know there's going to be nothing in Nesbit Park that's going to be covered? There'll be no improvements in that area all the way up? This is just the pond in Kirby Park we're looking at, just to clarify?
We are working only in the vicinity of the pond. One of the main reasons that we're staying on the land side of the levy is that permitting becomes a major factor as soon as you get onto the wet side of the levy, and the time to secure those permits wouldn't allow us to complete the project in the timeframe that we want to.
Thank you for that. And so the tree removal is the other side of the levy on the water sand. We've talked about it many times. Dr. Reisner was here many times. We know this discussion, that in flood events, those trees there are a real impediment to just public safety and the levy system itself. So...
I disagree with that.
Oh, okay. Very good. Clarify. Please, warming.
Sure. I mean, if you were to look at the flows during a major flood event on the Susquehanna River, and you were to look at it in scale, the trees that are out there would look like toothpicks. They really do not impact the flow of the river at that, when you have a major flood event.
That's why the JCC hired you. All right.
Any other questions by council members? Okay, so I would like to make, continue with my amendment. In the third whereas, I'd like to change, and is not feasible for the funds to be expended by December 31st, 2026, to it is not feasible for the entirety of the funds to be expended by December 31st, 2026. And the next whereas, I'd like to amend it to say, whereas $900,000 in awarded funds will be deobligated by the county.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead. If you have a question.
Yeah, I'm trying to read that third whereas.
Mm-hmm.
Where the JCC, it'll read then the JCC of Northeast PA is unable to, unable to complete the project.
As originally presented.
And approved. And it is not feasible for the funds.
The entirety, the entirety of the funds.
Oh, okay. I missed, I missed that.
Yep. That's where, that was my first part of my amendment.
Yeah, and I didn't hear that word. And it's not feasible for the entirety of the funds.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, is everybody okay with that being in one amendment or?
I think it needs a second, doesn't it?
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any discussion on that or any questions? Okay, all right. Roll call for the amendment.
Actually, go ahead, sorry. And I think this pertains to the next agenda item as well. I want to ask the manager specifically. So if we, if we deobligate this money, that's obviously money that's coming back to Loser County that we can program to other areas that are, we're a big county, there's a lot of needs out there as we all know this. So my question is, I represent the entire county. I want to make sure that we are getting the most bang for our buck and we're receiving the biggest yield for our investment. So can you speak to that, Manager Colton, before we even act on this amendment? If that's okay, Mr. Chair?
Yes, and Michelle Sparage is here as well. If that, those funds are deobligated, it goes back into the ARPA pool, the ARPA requirement, ARPA principal pool. And at this point, we can use it for any ARPA-approved project in the county. And that would have to come to council as all the projects come to council, whether they're in county or out of county.
Prior to December 31st.
I was going to say that, so we are in a time crunch with that.
Yes, we are, but.
So just elaborate on this, Colonel Colton, do we have any other projects that are out there that we're looking that can receive this money, really benefit it to?
The county projects that were presented earlier this year, and I'm sure because we're not increasing taxes, there may also be a project that we could fund, you know, from the budget.
So in other words, using these revenues here to make sure the budget comes in without a tax increase is what we're, we're looking at, just to clarify.
It'll be very helpful. I don't know if Mary wants to speak to that, but we will, we do have, we did submit a list of internal projects to council previously. And as you said, we're not in, we don't lack any internal needs.
Right. I mean, just to expand upon that, there are internal projects. I mean, there are also some external projects that we were going to use some interest money to fund that we obviously prefer to use ARPA funding to, to fund so that that frees up the interest money for the budget. You know, it's the second year of a no tax increase. It's, it's difficult.
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah, follow up on that. So, and Michelle, this is probably a question for you, Ms. Sparage. So if we're successful in the passing this measure tonight and that 900,000 then becomes available to the county for proper use, is there a requirement, it has to be in the same category that we originally wanted to?
No, because we're, we're hoping to move the funds now, like this evening, before 12:31, we can put it into a different funding category, into a different ARPA category.
That widens the breadth of.
Correct. And that's what the urgency has been to do the follow-up on these projects and to make sure we're spending the money in a timely fashion. And if it's not going to be spent, that we move it before the end of this year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Go ahead.
Who, Ms. Krishnowski? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, Ms. McDermott, I apologize.
I was just going to say, remember, we talked about the list of county projects over $10 million, so certainly this can help.
Yeah, and I think that there might have been something that was, I don't want to say misstated here, but it's a misnomer. This, this budget that we're presented with tonight, of course, we haven't really seen it yet, this doesn't account for any of this money, correct? Okay, that's, so the budget is being passed without a tax increase currently. The addition of these extra funds will help us to do some projects that were not included in the budget.
If I could, Mr. Chair, then?
Yeah.
Could the manager just speak then about what's the optimal use in her opinion about this, if you see a prioritization of those 10 items? Milled, if you could speak to that.
Well, I will be speaking to it when we present it to council. We need to look at the allocations because we might be able to shift some of the interest money that we're using for projects. We can actually take that interest money, we can take projects and use the ARPA requirement money and then shift it, expand on the interest money that we can use for anything. So we are meeting Michelle, Mary, Nick, Jim Pacora and Harry. We are meeting to go over those projects.
And just to expand on that a little bit, this, the, so the interest money is being shifted so that it can be used on any project?
Right.
And, and the ARPA money is being reallocated so it can be used on projects that only fall under the specifications of the final rule from the ARPA law, which has been updated several times since it's been passed and since we've initially allocated this money, which in my opinion is a little bit frustrating because we could have definitely used it for some other things originally. But, you know, we are where we are, so.
What we want to do is free up the interest money.
No, I get it. This, this program's been clumsy from the beginning. I was there when it initially started. You know how I feel about that. But I, this, this is my, my idea of local government, it's leveraging the state and federal funds to keep the lights on, to keep things going, to do our infrastructure improvements. And I mean, I see this as very valuable. I'm a Kingston person, I was at Wilkes-Barre for 10 years as well, and my family, we use Kirby Park more than probably anybody at this table. And I would love to see that pond come up to speed too. And it's, it's tough, you run around the pond over there, it's, needs some work. But I, I just want to make sure that we are using our money as wisely as possible. And so, I mean, further debate on this, I'd appreciate.
We are bringing it before council. We're not going to do anything unilaterally because we can't. Council has to approve it. So, and I.
And that's, I wish the cart were before the horse. I'd like to hear about that before voting on this specific. It's just a way that our options, because it's all about options here as well.
We gave you a list.
Right, right. Again, to clarify.
That council member McDermott correctly said was $10 million. And I can tell you, if I put an email out now for additional projects, it might be another $10 million. So, you know, we, we have to make the assessment, we have to look at the numbers, and, and that's what we're doing. That's what we're going to do. But before we finish, I, I want to say that the JCC, everybody has been really cooperative and working with us, and I want to applaud them for, for their efforts. And of course, Jim Brazina, which is, can do a master class, and I learn so much every time I sit with him. But I do want to say that they've been really upfront, working with us. And on behalf of the county, I want to thank them for that.
Any other questions by council members? All right, there's a motion and a second on the amendment. Roll call.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Willovitz?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. All right, we'll now have the.
I want to thank everybody, but I also have an additional interest check for $9,000 that we wanted to give to the county. Can I give it to you now?
Oh, you can give that directly to Mary Rozell. She's jumping out of her seat for it. Yeah, don't, don't give it to any one of us individually.
Mr. Fellman, if you could give that to me, I'll give it to Mary.
And I want to say that the JCC, when we sent requests out for the return of interest money, they were the first organization to return interest money, even before this check.
Thank you.
And we thank you for that. Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second on the original resolution now amended. Are you, everybody okay with their first and second? Okay, roll call on the amended resolution.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
You may.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Willovitz?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, number five, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for the city of Wilkes-Barre Industrial Development Authority. Is there a motion?
Well, it's a motion.
Okay, there's a.
Second.
All right. Okay, who was first?
Greg was first.
Who's on first? Okay, Greg. Greg and you'll second. Okay, Ms. McDermott, yeah.
On the question.
Okay, all right, and then, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say on the question.
Oh, we'll have Mr. Newman come up and, and speak to the project. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, council. Again, I'm Larry Newman from Wilkes-Barre. I'm appearing on behalf of the city of Wilkes-Barre Industrial Development Authority to provide an update regarding the riverfront parking garage project, which would result in the construction of 150 space parking garage costing roughly $4.5 million on the first block of North Franklin Street in Wilkes-Barre. As all of you know, the need for structured parking on this block has been discussed for decades. With the development of the River Common Park, the addition of more than 200 new rental apartments to this section of downtown, the Iron Temple and the pending redevelopment of the Sterling Site, that need has now become real. However, a new garage can't be built without enormous subsidy because garages now cost approximately $25,000 per stall to build. That's why county council's $2 million ARPA grant was so important. It addressed almost half of the project cost. But the project requires additional subsidy, so we've been working to secure the remaining funds, both before we received the ARPA contract in June of 2023 and ever since that time. The process of constructing a capital stack for this sort of project is extremely challenging. And unfortunately, our efforts to seek additional grants haven't yet resulted in firm commitments. I can stand here and talk about the length of grants and what it's like to be captive to other entities' timeframes. For example, we are still waiting to learn the results of a $1 million grant request that the IDA had initially submitted in November of 2023. The entity making that determination has repeatedly postponed their decision, most recently at their September 2024 meeting. And their next scheduled meeting is in mid-November. That's the reason that we had requested the extension of the project performance period to March 31st, 2025, which county council had granted on June 13th. Do we believe that we would be able to get this project funded, obligate the ARPA funds and begin construction within the March 30th window? I do. I have a high degree of confidence based on our most recent conversations with our state and local partners, that the garage can be fully funded so that it's completed and well in service before that date. But I recognize that a belief is not the same thing as a definitive commitment. We understand county council's concerns. We recognize that the ARPA requirements come much more stringent at year's end, and we intend to be good partners. While I wish the timelines were different, the IDA has no intention of placing this council in a position where they are unable to reallocate these funds. And I recognize that you need some time to do that. With that in mind, I'm certain that we will know by November 30th whether the parking garage project can be completed as originally presented and approved pursuant to the parameters of the ARPA grant. We do need that additional time to determine once and for all whether we can secure definitive commitments for the remainder and move to construction. Therefore, I'm respectfully requesting that Loser County give the Wilkes-Barre IDA until November 30th, 2024, to make that final determination. That's four months before the March 31st, 2025 end of our current grant performance period. If we secure the funding commitments to move forward prior to November 30th, I'll update county council accordingly, provide those commitments to you, and present the results. And if we don't have the funding commitments in hand by November 30th, the IDA will send you a letter on December 1st formally turning back the ARPA commitment, and council can proceed to reallocate the funds to a different ARPA-eligible project before the end of this year. Thanks for your consideration of our request.
Council members, any questions? Mr. Thornton?
Yeah, I actually have a question for Ms. Sparage. So his, Mr. Newman's suggestion is, he's asking council for some leeway here till November 30th, where he will have, the organization will have a definitive answer on the alternate funding. And what, the letter is December 1st. Okay, this is the first I'm hearing this right now. Does, does that pose any problems or issues with the program?
Okay, well, if I may, I just, I'd like to ask a question. The period of performance, the, the March 30th deadline, that's, the period of performance is when the funds have to be expended.
Right.
So you're not going to be able to do that prior to March 30th because the parking garage won't be completed. So would you be coming back, if you get the other funds, would you be coming back for a period of, another period of performance extension?
Well, I think that we would probably have, we would.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure you understand, it's not that the funds are committed, but the project has to be completed.
I think what we need to do is we need to understand where we are once and for all, and then either say, this is not something that can be undertaken at all, and turn that money back to the county before your deadline at the end of the year. Or we do have the ability to move forward. I can't sit here and answer what you're asking right now, Michelle.
Okay.
But I can commit that we will have the answer one way or another so that you have the time to be able to reallocate those funds before the end of the year.
So what I would suggest is if we're going to receive a letter on 12/1, we would have to either have a special meeting or bring it to that first council meeting in December. And I think what we'd have to do is deobligate the funds and have a project or another project ready to go at that same meeting. We can't, we can't.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I mean, I, you know, we've already given many projects an extension here, in my opinion. This is one of them. And at the previous meeting when we granted the extension, I believe that these were the same comments that were made. So that, you know, to know that there's not really any further movement in it, I understand there's no, you know, you can't guarantee it. I know you said, you know, you specifically, I wrote down, you wrote, you know, beholden and capped by other entities' timeframes.
That's correct.
And we're one of the entities that have a timeframe, but we're not, this isn't our timeframe. Our timeframe actually was four months ago, two months ago, whatever it was. So we, we have, you know, already extended your timeframe, and now we don't have any time left. That's what our issue is. So we know that if we don't have an opportunity to reallocate this money, then there's no way we can use it to construct something like a parking garage. You know, that's clearly not enough money, but.
No, it's not.
It will be, we'll end up just being pigeonholed and giving that back to the federal government, which is disastrous on our end. Mr. Thornton?
And your comments are spot on, Mr. Lombardo. The other question I have, Mr. Newman, is it seems like there was a little bit of a disconnect here tonight, only because the conversation you just had between Ms. Sparage and yourself, you seemed a little, you know, surprised that the, the complete parking garage must be constructed and finished by five months from now, March 31st. I, if you're not getting funding till possibly December, I don't see how that massive structure could be built in three months, over the winter. I, I can't see that.
Well, if, if that's the case.
I mean, what, I know you're not an engineer. I, I just can't see.
Mr. Newman, can you just come to the mic when you're, when you're speaking? Sorry.
I just can't see that happening. So even though you have all the funding on December 4th, let's say you got it all. And we say, okay, we'll give you our funding and you have all the rest, which, which is approximately how much in total?
What, how much do we need in addition?
No, no, total for the parking garage. What would you have?
Roughly four and a half million.
Four and a half. The big question here is, because we could be in a lot of trouble here if that garage isn't built by March 31st. So are there any project engineers that could speak to that tonight?
There are not project engineers that can speak to that. And I think that the conclusion that I am reaching here is that we have, you know, it appears that.
is that we have, you know, it appears that there's not going to be that ability to make that happen. So, I think that you will unfortunately have to reallocate the funds to a, a different project.
Ms. Barich? Did you have something else?
I did, I did just reach out to Gladys with Booth, because she is listening to the meeting. Only the ARPA funds would have to be expended before the period of performance. I did want to confirm that, but you would still have-
But that's something that could be done.
Alright, well, we're, yeah, I'm just running, we're running out of time.
We are running out of, we're running out of runway, but you know, what I am asking for is some additional time to make a definitive decision one way or the other as to whether or not this can go forward. And if it can't go forward, we will inform this body as, you know, if we, if it's determined before November 30th, we'll do that. We're waiting to see what happens through the middle of November at this point.
Okay, Mr. Lescavage?
So I, I'd be hesitant, except for, I attended, I think Greg, you were there, the 25th anniversary of the arena. And I watched many videos that night. And arena, no, we don't want no arena. We don't want that here. And I was floored to see the pictures before and after, and the development that happened around that arena. And I keep saying that if we don't welcome things and build things, then nothing will come. It's just the way it is. So I think sometimes you just have to take a chance. And me personally, I will vote not to take this money away from you right this minute, but we would need a dead-set agreement, for me personally, by the 1st of December. Only because I think along with that, another concert venue down there that's already in the works. You're right, we are gonna need the parking. You know, I come down to the square to go to dinner now and then, and it is, it's tough, especially if something's going on at the Kirby. But in order for other things to come, we gotta start somewhere. And I think that's a good place to start.
Any other council members? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Smith, I apologize.
I was basically going to say exactly what Kevin said, and I just wanted to echo those sentiments.
Okay, Ms. McDermott?
My question is maybe to Ms. Barich, if, if we, if our first meeting is December 10th, unless we were gonna do something, so let's say for instance, get the answer that they are not gonna be able to do the project, we take the two million back. Would we have no problem on the 10th to take that money back, be able to reallocate it for another ARPA project? That's close timing, but I-
It's very close timing, but I mean, we would just, I guess we would have to have a project ready to go, you know, in the, in the lineup, and we'd have to do both at the same meeting. I'm not saying it can't be done, we just-
We have a-
We have to be ready.
We would know by the 1st, so that would give us X amount of days.
Right.
But, I'm sure you have projects lined up, correct?
Yeah, it would give us maybe two weeks.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, it- I mean, we, we have a lot of work that we have to do.
So realistically, even waiting until the 1st, God forbid, you know, you can't use it for the garage, again, a worthy cause, but then realistically, can we reallocate it without losing it?
Well, I can't guarantee it. I, I, we have a lot of work. We have a lot of work that needs to get done, and there's a lot that goes into the work that we have to do. And I can't sit here and tell you that if we get a letter on 12/1 that by the time that we have our first meeting to approve a project, that we could do it. And that's making the assumption that the project that we posed to council, everybody will agree to it. So, I can't guarantee that.
My, oh, I apologize, no, go ahead, go ahead.
That's right, just really quick, would that count as internal or external, or are we just talking internal?
In my personal opinion, it would have to be a county project, because we don't have time to open up the whole process again, like, no.
My, my one final concern here, and I'll explain why here in a second, is that for this project, you know, this is, this is kind of like the last ditch effort. This is the last opportunity that, that we've had to hear from you. And in fact, it's, I mean, it's the first time council has heard from you since the last time that we've, we've spoken about the project here in the public. And, and I'll tell you, when we were drafting our agenda for this past meeting, I specifically spoke to, made sure that we spoke to our consultant and asked them about how to word these resolutions. And they're specifically worded as such basically to get these organizations, these two organizations off their butts, and getting them here to explain why we shouldn't take this money back. The JCA came, and they had a great presentation, they had some, you know, really good facts and figures, some things that really made, made me feel comfortable personally about supporting that project to its fruition. Here, you know, you, you've had that same opportunity. And we haven't heard that there's any funding in place, we haven't heard that there's, you know, the ability to get the money expended by March 31st. You might request an additional extension, which I don't think we've done for any other project thus far, is that correct? Ms. Barich? Did, I apologize.
I want to say no, off the top of my head, I, I believe everybody's come in like one time, but I could be wrong.
Right. Yeah, I think, I think it's only, this would be the only project that is gonna be doing that, and I mean, that would be-
There may have been one more, but I'd have to double check.
So, I mean, I, I'm very concerned by that, personally. It, it just, to me, is, is a risk that I don't know. I mean, I agree with Mr. Lescavage a hundred percent. I was at that same arena event. I thought it was amazing, and, and, you know, arena, yes, really transformed not just Wilkes-Barre Township, but that whole area. Made it amazing, just a, a great area for economic development. And, and we certainly should be taking chances, but if we don't allocate this money properly, we're gonna have to give it back. And I really don't know that I would want to be sitting at this table listening to the public tell us why we did wrong with that money, because we had an opportunity, and I, I don't want to, I don't want to cause us a problem there.
I wish I could say that we could turn it around quickly, but Nick and Michelle probably could speak to the fact that if they're infrastructure projects, what we have to do to go get, get RFPs and, and get, get a project approved and get engineers is really a heavy lift, and, and they do it every day. And I, I just can't guarantee that we could do it in, in two weeks.
Any other council members? Mr. Lescavage?
Is there any internal projects that are roughly that dollar amount that we're using interest money for that we could shuffle?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I don't know.
Any other council members, any questions?
I think I have a comment, Mr. Chairman, so I mean, if we we deobligate this money, deprogram this money, we're essentially saying to the Hotel Sterling project that that three million dollars will also be coming back because they're, they go hand in hand. Correct? Am I mistaken?
Not necessarily. Not necessarily, but I, I mean, our, from what my understanding is, is that the garage is obviously an integral part of the, of the project itself, but the hotel can certainly be constructed without the garage. So I don't know that we want to make any, any speculation on that.
If I could just
Yeah.
address that, the hotel and this garage are two different projects. There is no, there is no question that the hotel would benefit from the existence of this additional parking supply. But the reality is that we have been talking about the need to add additional parking in this block since 1992. And the nature of the uses have changed, and as I said during my comments, the we've finally reached the point with the residential development in that area, the River Common and the concerts and events at the River Common, and now the Irem Temple, that those alone would be a reason to look at this. This has been an effort to try and get out ahead, not just of those projects, but also, once the rest, the remainder of the Sterling Site, because it's a two-acre site, is being developed with a hotel, that means that this is the logical opportunity to try and take advantage of the window to build that parking supply in. Now, with that said, I am not here to be argumentative or to be difficult. I will say that we did present this in June at that meeting, and we discussed this project. But I also fully understand the difficult position that council is in. And so regardless of the decision that's made today, we absolutely respect that. But I just wanted to make it clear that this does not go hand in hand with the hotel project the way that it is sometimes described.
That's why I thought, I remember the principals talking, that was an integral part of, of that moving forward.
It's integrated insofar as the land that would be used for the garage is owned by the hotel developers.
Ms. Smith?
So, in life, when I come to a rock and a hard place, I generally try to find a compromise. So you offered November 30th, which is very late. I mean, it is very late. But if, and Leanne, Ms. McDermott, you started to do this, I think, if our next meeting is the 22nd, right?
Yes.
And then the next meeting after that is the 12th. Can we maybe do the 12th? At least give them until that meeting?
Mr. Newman, your reasoning for the November 30th deadline, you, can you repeat it? I know you, you stated that it involved-
I know he did too, yeah.
Talking, it involved talking to other entities for the funds.
It involved talking to other entities, but it specifically involves the, the timing of a key meeting of the entity that we are waiting to hear from regarding a million-dollar grant request that was made last November. And it is entirely possible that at that meeting, that grant request will be denied. And if that's the case, then we will pen the letter the next day before November 30th to, to tell you that this project can act, move forward, because then there's simply no way.
So there's truly no compromise on the date?
There could, November 20th? Is November 20th possible?
Whatever our second council meeting, that'll be the week of Thanksgiving, yeah. Whatever the council meeting, when-
Why, November 30th, you're saying because of this other grant? I guess that, I was trying to figure out why November 30th.
Yeah, that's, that's what, it was, it was basically the end of the month when we would, when we would be learning whether or not this was finally granted.
November 26th would be our second council meeting of the November month, and, and that would be-
When, when, is that the day that that entity giving, possibly giving you the grant, is that when they're making the decision?
I believe it's November 17th is the date, that's why I was suggesting-
Is that a million dollars or two million?
One million.
So, I have a question regarding that. So you stated before that this would require approximately four and a half million more dollars?
No, no.
No, okay, no, no, four, so four and a half million dollars including our two million?
Including your two million.
And then there's another million-dollar request, right, that you're looking, you're waiting for?
Correct.
So where's the other one and a half million dollars coming from?
From the other sources that we have been working with the state and with other partners, including a borrowing to pay for the balance.
Is that something that's, that's definitive, you can tell us right now that you have that? I mean, because now we're looking at not just one entity that we have to rely on, we're now looking at two entities that we have to rely on, or more than, maybe more than two.
What I'm looking for is the time to be able to give you a definitive answer as to whether or not we can move forward with it. We were asked to attend this meeting a week ago. And-
Well, you applied for the money two years ago, though.
I, and we were granted the money in June of 2023. And we are trying to be as forthright as we can be, but if the body does not feel that our request is going to work, then that's the will of the body, and that's, we're going to have to accept that and move forward.
Okay, are there any other questions by council members, Ms. McDermott?
Just one thing, if, if you're gonna meet with them on the 17th or possibly have an answer, we do have a meeting on the 26th. If we had an answer before that, that at least gives us extra time.
I-
A couple extra days. Sure.
I know, it's not a lot, but-
I'd like to make a motion, we postpone this until the November 26th council meeting.
You'd like to table this until the 26th council meeting?
I, I, I think, do I, is that the appropriate, yeah, then we just postpone it till? Yeah, table, table's fine, motion to table.
Alright, there's a motion to table. There's a second. Roll call.
Mr. Perry?
Yes?
Mr. Sabatino?
No.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
The date is the November 26th?
November 26th meeting, it would be.
In the interest of compromise, I'll vote yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
No.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
I'd like to see the project get done. I, I would hope for an answer even before that, you know, as soon as you can. But I'll vote yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
I'll vote yes as well.
Seven yes, three no, it is tabled.
Alright. Number six, motion to confirm or rescind resolution R202487 allocating American Rescue Plan interest funds for the use to replace the Sleepy Hollow Bridge in Butler Township. Motion?
Second.
Motion in the second, up to, okay, is it a motion to rescind or confirm? Are you, are you, are you making the motion to rescind it? To confirm it? Okay, is there a second on a motion to confirm?
Second.
Okay.
I, I, I'm not the fastest guy in the room. What, explain, I thought we already passed, so we have to confirm it?
Yes, no, so, Manager Crocomel, would you like to explain this?
Under the charter, the county manager has the right for, ask for reconsideration. I'm asking for reconsideration. The Sleepy Hollow Bridge, although it's, you know, very, people in that community are attached to it, it's a bridge that doesn't even have enough vehicle traffic to do a traffic study. We have other bridges on the list that do have a higher use, and we do have traffic studies. So, I'm asking that you reconsider using that money for that particular bridge, and it be returned into the, I think we use the ARPA interest on that, that it would be returned back into the ARPA interest.
And part of the reason, I think, Manager Crocomel, correct me if I'm wrong, why this, why this is asking, why this is being asked for reconsideration is because there is an updated list of the three hundred some bridges that we have, that we would like to take a look at, because there are some that have more critical situations than this, not to say that this bridge is not important, because many people, I, I, we've seen it, believe it is important, but there are other bridges that have critical issues that will be closed and will cause major problems.
That are closed, we actually-
Or are closed, I apologize, because there are some.
Our county engineer, he, he is doing a, a priority assessment.
Right. Okay, so there's a motion in the second to confirm, are you, okay. Are you, would, you, okay, withdraw your second, is there any other motion?
Motion, I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion to rescind by Mr. Lesc, sorry, Ms. Smith. Motion to rescind by Mr. Lescavage and seconded by Mr. Thornton. Roll call.
Mr. Perry? Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Alright, number seven, this one should go quick. Motion to adopt ordinance affirming protection for election workers from intimidation, harassment, and assault, and enhance collaboration with the Luzerne County District Attorney's Office.
Motion.
There's a motion in a second.
Motion to amend.
Go ahead.
I'd like to amend it to the amendment that has been posted for many weeks at this point.
Yes.
That has revised 91324 over it. Would you like me to be more specific?
Would any council members like more specificity before we discuss it any longer? I mean, we have seen it, everybody has had an opportunity to read the amended version of this resolution.
So affirmative vote on the amendment.
Yes.
Seeing that it gets second, if it was affirmative vote on the amendment, then we- we take another vote on the actual ordinance?
There's, we're going to vote on the amendment, then we'll vote on the ordinance as amended.
Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Chair.
Okay. So there's a motion to amend to the second version of the ordinance from 913. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Roll call. I think it was Ms. Krishnowski, sorry. No, 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 it was a second to amend. Yeah, sorry. Yes, yes. That's okay.
Roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes to the amendment.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes to the amendment.
Unanimous, it's amended?
All right, there's a motion and a second. You guys want to keep your motion in second on the amended?
Yes.
Yes. Any discussion by council members? Mr. Thornton?
Yeah, thank you. I sit here and I do seriously listen to all the testimony tonight. I thank everybody for taking the time out of their evenings and giving their moving testimony, and I appreciate it, I really do. I absolutely do not question any of the testimony by Ms. McBride or the others, that they were threatened. And I think that's appalling and reprehensible, and it should not, never, ever happen. And anyone who's, you know, found guilty of such egregious measures should be fully extend, should be prosecuted to the full extension of the law. I, I really wish, we have not come to this point in a country, and everybody points at the other side and this and that. And I just wish we truly could embrace, you know, more civility and, and I wish we had no violence. I wish we had no threats or anything like that. Unfortunately, we do. And it's, it's very sad. What a different world I live in from 40 or 50 years ago. I mean, it is, and it's a much, much worse place to be in this world now than it was 50 years ago. Trust me. It's sad. And I think we all play a part in that. I don't care what side of the aisle you fall down on, I think we all play a part in that. I, for one, as everybody knows, when Facebook came out 20, 25 years ago, I refused to get on. To this day, I still refuse to get on. I saw it as nothing but evil. And it has turned out to be evil. It's used, not always, but 90% of the time for nefarious reasons. And, and it's terrible. Nonetheless, I'm against threats, violence, harassment, intimidation, all that stuff. I really am. I, however, I do not see where this ordinance would stymie that. People that want to commit these violations of the law, they don't hear about this ordinance and say, oh my gosh, I'm afraid I'll get a thousand-dollar fine. That, that's not the criminal mind. So I, I don't see how this ordinance would, would benefit the situation in this county. I did also reach out to the two departments that would be affected the most by this ordinance. One is the District Attorney's Office, and the other is the Bureau of Elections. Now, all of council sitting here received the email from Emily Cook a few weeks ago, when this matter came up. Emily Cook, who is the Director of our Elections, who someone testified tonight, I think it was Ms. Davis of the audience, testified that Emily Cook was also threatened in severe manners such as Ms. McBride was. But Emily Cook wrote to the council members here, and I'm not going to read the whole thing, but I got to read part of it. She wrote, quote, "During my tenure, not one member of this council that has proposed an ordinance for our protections or the protection of the electoral process came to the department to ask the thoughts or opinions of those that are directly impacted by these decisions being made. The protections outlined within the proposed ordinance do not actually provide any sufficient means of expansion of protections or support of the election officials of the county from bad faith actors. We work closely with our partners in the DA's office, sheriff, and other law enforcement agencies to ensure we are all well-trained and prepared. Perhaps it would behoove members of the council to speak directly with any current members of the Bureau of Elections to accurately ascertain the needs and support for the workers in our county. In summation, the proposed ordinance is ultimately a waste of time. There are no legitimate actionable offenses that were not already addressed as protections for these workers under the law." There's more, but I'm not going to read it. So I have to go by our Director of the Bureau of Elections in this, who's firsthand dealing with this every day. I also spoke directly with the District Attorney, Sam Sangadulchi. He said, because there are criminal penalties inside this ordinance, law enforcement type language, which is in the revised version, his concerns are, we're fighting lawsuits. He said, because the laws already exist at the state level against harassment, intimidation, threats, all that, he said, this would only invite lawsuits against the county. And he said, don't forget, state laws trump or supersede, probably should use that word, supersede the county laws. So in that regard, and take it all as a whole, I cannot support that ordinance as it's revised.
Mr. Haas?
In the spirit of compromise, can I offer up an amendment as well?
Certainly.
Under, attached to Letter B encouragement for documentation, new paragraph, I'd like to read, "To further promote safety and security, the administration is encouraged to not deploy drop boxes, which are a potential source of fraud and a source of public discord." I'd like to see that attached to Letter B, and also strike Letter C violations, because that's not within our purview.
Can you please restate your amendment?
Yes. So the amendment is to attach on Letter B encouragement for documentation, "To further promote safety and security, the administration is encouraged to not deploy drop boxes, comma, which are a potential source of fraud and a source of public discord."
Okay. And you wanted to, so...
Strike C, that's not within our jurisdiction.
Should we, should we make, should we have an amendment for B and then an amendment to strike C?
I'd like to make them concurrently, if we can make them together. Because they're essentially one and the same. We're encouraging and we're not mandating.
Is there a second?
I object.
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion?
Can I just, I, I have to object to the motion because it's not on the topic of protecting election workers. It's on the topic of drop boxes. This is a different topic.
Is a, is a, is an individual...
Do the election workers, do they deal with the drop boxes at all?
I, I believe they do. Members of the audience, please.
Election workers retrieve the ballots at Penn Place. Our sheriffs go out to the outside drop box locations. I would think that our sheriffs are also considered election workers in that, in that way.
Mr. Wilovich, then, Mr. Thornton.
Mr. Skeens, since this wasn't part of the original ordinance, are we allowed to do that?
Use your mic. Sorry.
I speak so infrequently.
I didn't mean to be so nasty about it.
Council could make any motion, could make any alterations they want to, if they want to amend the motion. You can make a motion here. It just came up, and it's not something we knew about beforehand.
You can vote against it.
I still think it's a different subject for sunshine law. This doesn't speak to drop boxes in any way, shape, or form. It doesn't speak to forms of voting. And the amendment speaks to forms of voting. This does not speak to forms of voting.
Mr. Chair, I do want to emphasize that the whole premise of this ordinance is to enhance security and safety of our election workers. And if drop boxes, which are clearly a part of the Election Bureau, and our Election Bureau employees deal with them, I think it's very appropriate that it's included here. If it, so, and the people could vote on it, if it's included as an amendment. And one other further thing, I have a question for Manager Crocomo. Counsel was apprised of various threats that she received in the last several weeks from credible security, law enforcement agencies of the state and the United States. And Ms. Crocomo, I hate to put you on the spot, don't elaborate, but did you receive any kind of instruction or advice concerning safety surrounding the drop boxes? Or did I box you into something that you...
No, it, it, it's difficult to say. I did not receive specific instructions on how to make drop boxes safe in Luzern County. What I received was an acknowledgement that what we are doing currently is not safe and secure drop boxes. And I can tell you, I, I can't, I cannot say that the administration can keep the drop boxes safe and secure individuals who may use the drop boxes or the ballots themselves.
And, and the employees as well?
And the employees.
All right.
I still submit, as someone who, having amended this and having had to go through the Sunshine Act, I still submit, I even took a couple of CLEs, Harry. I even took a couple of CLEs to make sure that I understood it. By changing this subject and not advertising it, we're inviting lawsuits by the, because of the Sunshine Act. If you want, if you want to make the amendment, you can add the amendment, but then, I mean, it has to be advertised, or we're going to, we're inviting lawsuits under the Sunshine Act. We are.
Isn't the purpose of this to expand the definition of who a poll worker or an election worker is? Are we not expanding the definition further by doing this?
By adding an inanimate object?
No, not an inanimate object. Adding a class of people and advocating for their safety.
There are already a class of people under the ordinance, and we're already advocating for their safety. We're adding an inanimate object. That is a different subject from, there is nothing in the, I'm sorry. There's nothing in the title about drop boxes. There's nothing in the title about, there's nothing in it about the actual locations, the physicality of any election, the physicality of the Bureau, the physicality of drop boxes. There's nothing about that. That changes the topic.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
It goes beyond an inanimate object. We're not just talking about an inanimate object, like a drop box. We're talking about prescribed procedures and requirements of our employees of our Election Bureau. And, and, and part of those requirements add perceived or maybe real danger to their job created by the presence of what we call drop boxes. So it, it's also a procedure and policy problem that we have with our employees who are going to be forced and mandated under current conditions to possibly put themselves in danger. That's all I'm saying.
The election workers would be covered under this ordinance, whether they're receiving ballots from drop boxes, whether they are standing inside the Bureau, whether they are standing inside a poll location. It has nothing to do with what they're doing, and should not prescribe with anything to do with what they're doing, which is a major reason why I cut out a large portion of it. Chair, Vice Chair Thornton spoke to the fact that it would include the DA's office, which is incorrect. It is a local ordinance. Only police prosecute local ordinances. It had nothing to do with the DA's office at this point, much like local police only prosecute traffic tickets.
I was simply pointing out that his guidance to me was that it would promote additional lawsuits against the county because of the penalties.
Understood. But I, my objection still stands, in that it has nothing to do with the physicality. If we're going to add physicality to it, it changes the subject and is thus a violation under the Sunshine Act.
I think it would be good practice, though, if, if there's a legal opinion here on whether or not we should prolong this and properly advertise the amendment as proposed by Mr. Haas. However, that may require that we table this ordinance again. Did we table it the first time?
No.
Because I didn't introduce it.
All right, so it could possibly be tabled, and I, I don't, that's not my preference, but you, you, Mr. Chair, you're going to say...
If I, if I could, Mr. Chair, we know this is going to pass, and we get the short title here. It says, "An ordinance to the county affirming protection for election workers. The folks who work in our Elections Bureau are election workers, from intimidation, harassment, assault. We are, we are worried that those drop boxes are a source of violence, and anytime we have a staff member guarding them or emptying them, that puts them in jeopardy." It's, it's, it's fully appropriate.
You're still talking about a source, an inanimate object. This does not talk about any of the sources. This doesn't talk about any of the physicalities, like I said before. It's still a different topic. It still would need to be advertised under the Sunshine.
Please call to a vote.
All right, call the question on the amendment.
Ms. Smith?
No.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Wilovich?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
On the amendment for the drop box language. And, and, and to, and to, strike C, and to strike part C.
Mr. Lescavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Thrown at me at the last second, I don't like. You know, I'd like to think about this a little bit more, and I really don't know if it is a violation. I know you're saying it's not, but to me, I feel like it may be. I don't know. So I'd rather just vote on the original ordinance and say no to the amendment.
Okay.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
No.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Five yes and five no. It fails.
The amendment fails. Okay. Back to the original. There's a first and a second. I have one or two things. Now, I think that this exchange that we've gone through here is really important. It's important because it shows, you know, for me, I would prefer to sit here and let everybody on this council get a win. You know, have a piece of legislation they bring to the table and they pass, and it's awesome, everybody votes for it, 11-nothing, we can all clap our hands and then be out of here by, by, out of here by seven, you know?
The government.
So, the reason why I was asking some questions two weeks ago about this was for this exact purpose, that, you know, we would have liked to see, at least I would have liked to see, some discussion, not just with the entities that would be affected by it, which was the District Attorney's Office in your previous version of it, which you, you said you did not consult with him. And then now it would be the Elections Bureau. Who, did you consult with them in any way?
I've already stated I have conflicting, well, I'd like to answer this after, can I answer that question when you're done with your comment?
Sure.
Thanks.
Okay. So that's, that's part of it. Making these amendments on the fly is, is very difficult, especially when it relates to an ordinance. I think if this was a resolution, it would have been a little bit more simple. But being that you're, you're, you know, this is an ordinance, it's, it's a separate thing, it's more difficult. I'm listening to some of the comments that the public made, which I just want to address a couple of them. If we had passed this ordinance in its current form, this thing about the hundreds of emails that were received by council members in regards to several different subjects, if I received 100 text messages from an ex-girlfriend, I would consider that harassment. Yes. So if I receive 100...
From one person, from one person.
Right. I, I understand that. But to receive hundreds of emails, that has totally disrupted the ability to see other emails and respond to other important notifications, not to say that they're, not to say that the words, citizens aren't important, but I really appreciated seeing this document tonight, which had 100 signatures or 100 names affixed to it, and this one, which had 30-some names. I thought that was very appropriate. And I, I certainly looked through this and said, oh, wow, I know this person. Oh, wow, I know this person. Oh, I wonder why they, you know, support this. Maybe if I had seen this prior, I would certainly have gone and spoken to them about it, because I think that there might be some misinformation floating around about what is going on here. That's a different story. But that's, that's part of it. And again, like I said, I think it's really important to, to remember that... And again, like I said, I think it's really important to, to remember that, you know, we asked for a couple of things. I, I did ask for you to speak to the Elections Bureau last week, and you didn't do that. And you know that there are council members here who had questions about it and probably would be opposed to it. And I don't know what, who you reached out to or spoke to and tried to convince or tried to make a compromise with, but it certainly wasn't Mr. Haas, because he made this amendment, and you voted no on it. Okay. But again, I mean, I, I would have certainly voted for some type of compromised amendment on this, because I support our poll workers, and I don't want anyone to believe that I don't, and I certainly don't want this to be a piece of campaign literature, should I run for reelection next year, which I certainly fear it will be, which I think is very unfair. Because I do support our poll workers and our election workers. In fact, one of the, one of the things that was being referenced by Ms. Gilbert was something that I was there that day that it occurred in the Elections Bureau, the day after the election, after the election in November 2022. I was here when an election board meeting was held in the rotunda. There were 300 very angry people. I personally did not feel safe. And to know that Ms. Gilbert had actually gone to the police and nothing was done, or I shouldn't say nothing was done, that nothing ever came about from it, concerns me just as much with this ordinance, because if the police aren't prosecuting something going on that's a state crime, or that is, they didn't have enough evidence to figure it out, how are they going to have enough evidence to prosecute something like this? I'm very confused by that.
The police have enough, as a criminal defense attorney, who is well aware of the sentencing commission on, sentencing guideline commission, I can tell you that the police find enough evidence every day to prosecute harassment, to prosecute threatening behavior. My misdemeanor one, terroristic threats, happens every single day.
So this ordinance would change their process?
No.
Okay.
No. But it would add, it is not strictly duplicative. As I mentioned in the very first meeting, it includes doxing, which is not yet addressed in any state law. So this would not violate any state law. This would not attempt to override any state law. And given Mr. Haas's comment on section C, those, those rights are, are given to us under Title VIII Pennsylvania Consolidated Statutes 33, Section 33,21, which prescribes that a ordinance shall prescribe fines, fines and penalties for a violation. The council may prescribe a criminal fine not to exceed $1,000 per violation and may prescribe imprisonment to the extent allowed by the law for the punishment of a summary offense. That's 90 days. Any summary offense, you can go to jail for 90 days. That's a good thing for everyone in the world to know. However, I've talked to you a lot as a lawyer, and now I just want to talk to you as a person. I don't understand why this ordinance is so difficult, when the very day that I introduced it, our own manager and our own, our own Director of Elections went on national news talking about the threats to election workers, talking about the fact that we have lost over a third of our election workers in the last three and a half years, that we have lost that kind of institutional knowledge. I don't know how you can square saying no to this ordinance, which all it does is protect election workers, when we are pulling out giant rocks and putting them in front of Penn Place. I don't understand how you can say no to this.
Mr. Chair.
And say that we need safety regulations and put boulders in front of Penn Place. I don't know how we can, can I just finish, please?
We didn't need an ordinance to do that, yeah.
Mr. Chair.
No, let, let Ms. Smith finish her comments.
So you asked me if I spoke to Emily. I did not speak to Emily, because I have conflicting statements from Emily. And Emily is not the only election worker. There are plenty other election workers. Election workers who signed this petition that you have in front of you, that Ms. Cook, I apologize, Ms. Cook, I've known her for a very long time, didn't ascribe her name to, which is fine. She may not feel this way, but clearly other people do. But when we are saying that we are removing drop boxes, we are placing boulders in front of Penn Place as a security measure, this should not be difficult to say, yes, we want to protect our election workers. There is nothing that chills any First Amendment rights, threatening, harassment, stalking behavior, anything listed in this is already prescribed behavior that we cannot, that is not protected by the First Amendment. So there is no issue with the First Amendment here. This should not be difficult.
Go ahead, Mr. Thornton.
Can we call a vote, please? Mr. Chair, I just want to say, no one is questioning, no one's doubting what Ms. Smith's saying about threats and safety and all that. We all agree, everybody in this room agrees, those exist. What I'm saying is, this ordinance is not going to help that situation at all. Mr. Chair, before you do call the question, I just have a suggestion. I don't know which way the vote's going to go on this, but if this vote measure fails to pass, I strongly suggest the chair consider either a resolution or a proclamation at a future meeting, basically saying similar language as this ordinance, but without all the criminal penalties. That's just my suggestion. Thank you.
I would love to do that. I'd love to assist. I'd love to sit down with every member of council and try to make legislation that everyone will appreciate and can pass unanimously. All right, is there, I guess we called the question. Okay. Call the question.
Mr.?
No.
Mr. Vlachowicz?
No.
Mr. Haas?
No.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lescavage?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
I condemn any threats of violence or intimidation, but even with this ordinance, it has to be enforced. I know we went through it, again, we heard everything, and consequences need to be enforced on the laws that are already existing, but I vote no.
Mr. Perry?
Hello.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
I 100% condemn any violence against any poll workers or election workers, and I support them as much as I can. It's been demonstrated many times in these meetings, sometimes to the chagrin of people of my own party, but I vote no on this.
Three yes, seven no. It fails.
All right, public comment. We have, let me see, hold on a second. All right, Anthony Gallagher?
Yes.
Yeah, sorry, sir.
No worries. Appreciate the time. So this is a non-agenda item. My name is Anthony Gallagher. I'm with, my company is Key Energy Consulting. We are a licensed electric supply broker here in Pennsylvania. At this moment in time, we are the, we are the broker of record for the electric supply for Luzerne County. Your current agreement for your PPL accounts is with WGL Energy. Your current rate, this agreement will, excuse me, this agreement will end in December. Your current rate for the county, including the gross receipts tax, is 7.94 cents per kilowatt hour. When that gets compared to the historical PPL price compare, price to compare over the timeframe from when we implemented this in February, the county has saved $672,000 on their electricity by locking in this fixed price with WGL Energy. Over the years, I've worked with Tannis Manso, Ed O'Neill, Fred Rosenkranz, Gary Kurtz, and then in August, I reached out to introduce myself to Jennifer Picora. I explained to Jennifer Picora that I was the broker of record and that the renewal's coming due in December. I reached out to my supply partners. As a broker, we work with many of the electric supply companies across the country. When I reached out to ask for renewal options for Luzerne County, they informed me that a letter of exclusivity exists, and it was submitted by another broker. I reached out to Jennifer and explained that a letter of exclusivity prohibits supply partners from giving pricing to any other broker other than that one broker who has the letter of exclusivity. So I've tried to explain to Jennifer on three different occasions that if you go through a bid process with one broker who holds the letter of exclusivity, it's not a full bid process, because other supply, other suppliers aren't able to put their pricing out to other brokers. When a broker gets pricing from a supply partner, he puts, he or she puts their broker margin on the price from the suppliers. That's how we make our revenue. With a letter of exclusivity, there's nothing to keep that other broker, the other broker is World Connect Energy, there's nothing to prevent them to put whatever broker fee they want on the price that they present to Luzerne County. So what I'm asking for is for Luz, I'm not asking for exclusivity. We welcome competition. We welcome World Connect to bid on the business. We would like to bid on the business as well. What I'm asking for from the county is a letter that can be sent to all suppliers saying that the bid is open to all brokers, submit your pricing to all brokers, and let each broker put their broker margin on it, and then submit it to the county as, in a response to the RFP. I was told the RFP is not out yet, but it should be coming out soon. So I wanted to get in front of this to let you know, if you put out that RFP with a letter of exclusivity on it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gallagher.
Okay.
Thank you.
So this is the letter.
Got it. Okay. Well, if you give it to us, we're going to end up by putting it out for the public. I don't know if that's something that you're okay with.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, just, just hand it, you can hand it to Mr. Sabatino if you'd like, and he can give it to the manager.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Okay. Who's next? Mr. Griffith?
I want to address the issue of the Attorney General's recent decision to, to inform our county manager that she has to abide by the rules of the Board of Elections. And I find it kind of disturbing that we fought really hard, myself, a couple of the older folks who are not with us anymore, to have home role in this county, so we could have a structure of government where we control our own destiny. Yet we have an Attorney General who makes a statement to our manager who says, you have to have drop boxes because the Board of Elections said so. Yet she doesn't address the fact that drop boxes are illegal right from the beginning. It's kind of strange to me. The chief law enforcement officer of the county, or the state, I should say, does not even address the fact that the Board of Elections passed an order to put drop boxes in that aren't even legal. Yet she has the Husbah, if I could say Jewish correctly, to tell people in the county that we can't do this, because we're violating the Board of Elections. So I implore the Board of Elections to start taking control of that, or the council, start taking control of this board. They're out of control. I see their agenda for tomorrow, they have a budget that they're going to approve, review, and approve. Now, the Budget Committee of which my deputy sat on, as well as Mary Roselle and others, sat at nauseam crafting a budget, cutting money from a budget, going through all of that to get a zero-based budget, yet the Board of Elections gets to review a budget and go to, come to council and say, this is what we want. The Election Integrity Grant is funded by this county, given to this county, approved by this council, with clawback provisions in it. If we don't spend it properly, we have to pay that money back. Yet the Board of Elections is saying, ah, we're going to take Election Integrity money and use it for security, without any regard at all, whether that's a legitimate expense or not. This is out of control. This council needs to pass legislation to tell this board what we want them to do and, and guide them that we want security on. I have no problem with drop boxes, let's be clear. I do have a problem with election integrity. I do have a problem with safety and security of our voters and people who go to those ballot boxes. I do have a problem with people dropping more than one ballot in there. So if we're going to have a security issue, the Board of Elections needs to tell this council, what is their plan? Is that security officer going to challenge people who have more than one ballot in their hand to make sure they have an affidavit in their hand that gives them the right to put more than one ballot in there? Is that security officer going to do anything more than stand there and watch people come and go out of that box? This council has no idea what they're going to do, but they want the money from our Election Integrity Grant to do this. You need to have legislation to tell them, if you want this money, you need to give us a plan, a comprehensive plan, just like you do with every other department in this county. When we want to spend county money, and we'll wrap up, if we want to spend county money as a department, we have to come to council and tell them why. They should do nothing more. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. I don't think Dr. Reisinger is here anymore? No? Okay, Mr. Raabo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To expound on what Controller Griffith said, I might add, lame duck Attorney General. Very important here, because if the Attorney General was running for reelection concurrent, then she would be prosecuting that litigation. Okay? And I find it very striking that there was an empty threat of criminal charges with regards to the drop box. I'd like to hear from the lame duck Attorney General where it says in the law, any statutory law or the Supreme Court ruling where there is criminal charges attached to drop boxes not being deployed. The ruling of the State Supreme Court, in summation to everybody here, said it was up to the individual counties to allow for drop boxes, and here's where the problem is. The problem is, they get to determine how many drop boxes, which violates the state constitution under Article VII, Section 6, so you might want to read that. Now, also, and I said this to the state back in 2020, where's the insurance coverage to protect the counties if there's any problem during the chain of custody for those ballots in the mail, for the mail-in ballots in the drop boxes? If there's a problem, if there's a lost ballot, or something happens to the drop box, when they were those set-top tabletop boxes, and I'm not talking about the ones that are like the US mailboxes, then they changed them. But this is the problem, Mr. Chair and members of Council Manager Krokoma. I said this back in 2020. In fact, Manager Krokoma was the acting chief county, or the chief county solicitor, and then she was acting county manager during that time, when we were all debating this issue. So if you want to consult the whole thing, get our state legislators to do the damn job and try to hash this out. In fact, one of the hecklers, Mr. Chair, outside of the courthouse, you know what, that senator, where the senator sits on, what committee? The Law and Justice Committee. So you might want to have a little chat with them. You know, kind of say, hey, you know, let's get together and hash this out. But what do I know? I'm just the Joe Schmo from Hazelton. Okay. That brings me to number three on the work session item. I just wanted to say, Mr. Chair, for your edification councils and the county manager, it was, the area that's proposed was rezoned not once, but twice, once the county, the city zoning ordinance itself was rezoned, and then again, that specific area where Alan Ridge, or Alan Wood, sorry, I don't know if that's the accurate area, I know it's the accurate area, it's in the, it's in the terror section, but I think that needs to be brought up into question, the zoning issue, because that's in a very prominent area, Mr. Chairman, because it's not blighted. So just so you know.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Raabo. And I just, I'm not one usually to respond when people, not that I'm responding to you, Mr. Raabo necessarily, but to a comment you made, that I do believe that a lot of these issues that we're having with elections are 100% something that could be solved by the state legislature. And to, to have seen two weeks ago, I was absolutely infuriated by the fact that three of our state legislators who have the ability to fix that, Representative Haddock, Representative Pashinsky, and Senator Flynn, attended that very disruptive protest outside, and there were people on both sides that were very disruptive. I'm not going to point fingers at one or the other. You know, we were trying to have a ceremony to recognize collegiate athletes throughout this, throughout the county, and we had to hear bullhorns and people back and forth. It was so disrespectful and so disruptive, and to see that some of our state officials attended, and knowing that many of us are their constituents, they don't reach out to us, they don't ask us how to help us, all they do is come and try to disrupt us. I, I found that so disruptive, and I just wanted to make sure that I, I said those, those three state legislators' names here tonight.
What are your limitations?
No, no, Mr. Raabo.
Just one thing.
Mr. Raabo, I, Mr. Raabo, please, please. Okay, okay.
I'm allied by the state.
Okay, Mr. Raabo, please, okay. Thank you. All right. Anybody else for public comment? Mr. Granteed. No, Mr. Grant, Mr. Granteed, I'm sorry, we have, we have other individuals. No, no, go ahead, go. You're, you're okay.
Somebody's glasses are here. Joe Granteed, Plains Township. I just wanted to respond to one of the Zoom people who described what I was saying as conspiracy theory. There was nothing that I said that was a conspiracy theory. President Biden, twice that I know of, threatened us with F-16s. Everybody heard it. Justice Department went after a parent who was at a school board meeting in Loudoun County, arrested him because he stuck up for his daughter who was sexually assaulted. Not a conspiracy theory. Seems like all of the things that I mentioned are things that are happening if you're a conservative. And one other thing, the same person on Zoom, twice when he spoke, mentioned doxing. I never heard of doxing until the Democrat, Democrat left-wing radicals went after President Trump's cabinet. Trump's cabinet, family, and some of the senators and congressmen in Washington DC. Also, they went after Supreme Court justices with doxing. I have never heard of a conservative doing any doxing or trying to deprive anybody of their work, their jobs, their livelihoods. It comes from the left, and I just wanted to point that out, that the left is the one that is pointing the finger at us for doing it, and we don't do that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Granteed. Anybody else in the audience? Okay, Mr. Fitzgerald?
I just want to expound on Walter Griffith's thing. I think that he has driven a point home. Again, I want to solve, I don't want to have a great election, and I think if we're going to have drop boxes, where it looks like we have, I think we need to man them, just like we manned the polls. I think if we want transparency and everybody to have equal rights and everything like that, everything being fair, we should have some drop boxes paid by our county, and just like we'd go up, we have to, you know, sign in and have, they should have a register book. We should train them, whoever's working there, should have a desk. They give a name, they put a ballot in. If they're gonna put somebody in, they have to produce that other, they put two in. And at the end of the day, they have video, so if they have one person, three people, and it's signed things, that we should have that many ballots in the box, so there's no stuffing. So we can verify it, everybody can be happy, and there's no problems. Makes sense, right? The other thing is, I think what we should do is put a four-by-eight signs next to the ballot boxes, one in English, one in Spanish. It should say what the law is when using drop boxes, so somebody can say they don't know it. So big four-by-eight right by the drop boxes, put the law and the rules, no excuses. I also think we should do that at every bureau, every polling place. We should put in English and Spanish the laws and who can vote. Non-citizens can't vote. We should put that in everything. Hundred bucks a sign, that's it. Let's get it done. Let's make sure we have integrity elections, people know the laws, we encourage people to vote, that are legally to vote, and we have to try to make sure that people are educated, informed, on what the legalities are. I think if we do that, we would have a lot less issues. But again, driving home what Walter said is honestly, at the drop boxes, we should have educated, informed people that cannot just just sit there to make sure the drop box, the metal, the inanimate object is safe, but make sure that the election's safe. And like I said, if when you go to a polling booth, they ask you for your name, we should do it, we should treat those people that are given a convenience for it the same way that the people that come up at the polls. Equal, equally. So when people go to the drop box, put your name. Have the voter roll right there. Let's educate the people to do it, and let's get it done. Thank you.
Mr. Herring, on the Zoom.
Good evening. I want to, before I talk too much like I normally do, I want to thank Manager Crocamo for, well, what I see is truly leadership, you know? We have a saying in the military, "In the rear with the gear is usually people that aren't on the, on the front lines really, you know, taking care of their people." I think that she demonstrated exceptional leadership here because what she tried to do is protect the people that she is in charge of in the county. And even though I disagree with the decision that was ultimately made, I do commend her for having the courage to stand up in the front of the pack and say, "These are my people, and I'm gonna defend them." So much respect to her for what she's doing. I do, I do second what was said earlier. I think we have a huge issue on the election board as far as hyper-partisanship. I don't know how to fix it. I'm not coming here with some kind of solution now, but I think you guys realize it is an issue. I want to bring up a few things that I noticed in the last year. We were at a rally that Scott Pressler went to up in Wilkes-Barre Township, and there was a protest outside. And in that protest was, I don't want to mess up her name, but I think it's Audrey Serniak. She was a former election board member. I thought when she got off the election board, she would just kind of go on and, you know, kind of get out of the, the public, if you will. But she's now a protester showing up with, you know, Kamala Harris signs and anti-Trump signs. And then conversely to that, Beth McBride is, you know, is well documented, is now part of this Action Together NEPA, is their election person. And that's a very, that's a 501(c)(4) Democrat, very hyper-partisan, left-wing organization. I think it kind of underscores what we talked about here tonight, which is, if you're going to come up and say about threats and you're, you know, and I heard what you guys said, you guys said that they were legitimate. I'm sorry, I'm skeptical because I was in a court hearing, and I, she had a chance to produce that, and nothing was ever produced, so call me a little skeptical there. But nonetheless, you wouldn't go to a nonprofit, in the public eye once again, ask the newspaper to continuously publish press releases with your name on it if you were that concerned about your safety. It just doesn't, it doesn't match up whatsoever. So I think it was paid actors tonight, once again, and I commend the council for not falling for it. Chairman Lombardo, I wish I could say I was wrong, but I think you absolutely are all gonna see where they're gonna use this stuff to smear and go after you at the next election, just like they did with Harry Haas. And that's just the nature of what we're living in, it's reality. I wish it wasn't reality. I wish we can come to common ground on some things, but unfortunately, that's what you're gonna see. But again, the facts are the facts. There was no proof of the, you know, the election threats. And again, why would these people go right back into the public eye if they were so worried about their security? So, thank you. Have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Herring. We have one more. Okay, there we go. Audrey, can you hear us?
No.
Audrey, can you hear us?
All right, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, very good. Audrey Serniak, Plains Township. I have First Amendment rights. I have a right to make my voice heard. I can protest wherever I want to, as long as it is peacefully and within the law. I will not be silenced. I was at that press conference as well outside the other day. It was highly disruptive. We were not allowed to speak our piece. We were over, shouted down with bullhorns yet. No one was listening to our side, but we will not be shut down. We will have our say. We need to have public discussions, and I will not have anyone, anyone, tell me that I cannot have my say, that I cannot speak out. And if you think that I'm gonna just sit back and take this kind of stuff, guess again. I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Serniak. All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's 9:13.
All right, council members, it's 7:20. Please take your seats. Let's get out of here as quick as possible. Oh, 7:20. It's 9:20. 9:20. I'm sorry. I'm used to... Listen, I'm used to these meetings going quick. I don't know what to say here. I'm getting a little tired. I'm starting not to be able to read. All right, council. Let's, uh... It's 9:21 PM. I'd like to call the, uh... I'd like to call the work session to order. We already had the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Hawes.
Here.
Ms. Krishnawski. Mr. Liscavich. Ms. McDermott.
Here.
Mr. Perry. Mr. Sabatino.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Thornton.
Here.
Ms. Stevenson. Mr. Wilovich.
Here.
Mr. Lombardo.
Here.
Ten of eleven.
All right. Any additions or deletions from the work session agenda? I have actually two, one that I think people are gonna like. Can we... I entertain a motion to move number four to number one, if that's okay?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I'd like to strike number six. Is there a motion?
Move number two to number one, or number...
What? Number two to what?
The Woodbridge. Move that before Division.
Okay. Yeah, okay. That can be number... Well, it's number...
I can go at the end.
Okay. All right, we'll have Division reports as number... It'll be five after we strike the original one. Are we okay with striking number six?
So moved.
Move second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then... All right. Is that good? Are we okay now? Okay, let's just get moving here. Our new number one is number four. So, "Discussion Regarding the Resolution Requesting a Multimodal Transportation Fund Grant from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation." Take it away, Ms. Sparich. Absolutely.
Passing an authorizing resolution for a multimodal project, and the application will be submitted through PennDOT. And we put it on the resolution without a final cost, and Nick may be able to shed some light on that, because the deadline for the application is November 5th. So in order to get it on the work session and the voting session, we had to put this before you. But we will, as soon as we get the cost estimate from the engineer, we will certainly present that.
Yes, and thank you to Michelle for all her work on this. This is for County Bridge 25208 on Sutton Creek Road over Sutton Creek in Exeter Township. It's roughly 1.5 million. That could change based on the engineering review. A really big rehab, but if we were to replace this bridge, it would be close to 10 million. So I would rather now than have a problem in five to 10 years where we have to replace the whole thing. Any questions?
Mr. Thornton?
Yeah, Mr. Vog, I'm very familiar with that road. I live up that way, and this money you're seeking is only for the bridge?
Yes.
Because I gotta tell you, that road is in really bad shape. I mean...
It is.
There's areas you could just fall off the road and be in trouble. I mean, it's really like chunked away and I...
3 million on that road won't take us far.
Well, I get it. So are there any plans to repair that road, or repave it, or anything like that?
I would love to repair every road and bridge we have, but there's priorities.
Because I had... I only ask that because when I first got on council three years ago, I had residents from up on that road come to me personally and tell me that road was in really bad shape. And that was three years ago. And now they... I was approached just today by someone. Just happened to be, I was walking my dog in the local cemetery, and the guy came up to me and said, "How come you never, ever do anything with that road?" I said, "Well, ask and find out." So I just ask, please put it on your radar screen.
Will do. Yes.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, our new number two, "Discussion Regarding the Woodbridge Healthcare Resolution."
Good evening, council members. My name is Laura Kurtz. I am with Eckers Siemens, and I represent Woodbridge Healthcare as their bond counsel. We're here in front of you to explain the resolution that you have. It's the Tefra Resolution. Woodbridge is interested in acquiring the CHS facilities, including Wilkes-Barre General Hospital. And in order to do that, to issue tax-exempt bonds to finance that project, they need approval, called Tefra Approval, under the tax code, which requires approval from the governmental unit having jurisdiction over the facilities. So that's what we're asking you to approve at your next meeting. Mr. Don Steinman from Woodbridge, he's the president of Woodbridge, is here with me tonight to answer any questions you might have about the project.
Mr. Steinman is your last name?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Steinman, I just have one question. I think some other council members may have the same. So you're a nonprofit, that's correct?
Correct.
Okay, so as a nonprofit, your intention will probably be to... These properties will be removed from the tax rolls. Is that what your intention is?
Yes, it is. Being a not-for-profit, as you know, throughout the United States, especially hospitals, do not pay taxes, property taxes. And obviously, any of the monies that are made at the hospitals will be poured back into the hospitals.
Great. So right now, our organization that owns this facility and the others is a for-profit company, and they do pay taxes. This will be a pretty significant hit to our tax revenue. And I know that we shouldn't and won't negotiate anything like this in public, but, you know, one of the suggestions I've heard was maybe discussing like a payment in lieu of taxes type of situation. Is that something that you guys think that you might consider? Are you aware of something like that, or have you done it in the past, or would you consider something like that?
So we are aware of the request, and unfortunately, as you know, we're in the process of turning these hospitals around. And we're really at the infancy stage, and we're really not in a position to do any pilot at this point.
Okay.
We do, as you know, our goal is to grow these hospitals, both sides in Lackawanna as well as Luzerne County. And also, part of our commitment is, we believe going forward, that our goal is to bring back some of the services that have been diminished and also help enhance the employment side in the local community. I think the other part also, you know, we're gonna be pouring some additional capital into both sides. And obviously, with that, there's permitting, et cetera, that will occur.
Will any jobs be lost immediately upon the sale and transfer?
No. We committed to take all employees that are in good standing, and we also have, will assume, the union contracts.
Okay. The union contracts, he said. Anybody else have questions? Mr. Thornton?
Yeah, sir, thank you for being here tonight. Now, given that your organization would be, I guess, seeking tax-exempt status on the property at the hospital, as Mr. Lombardo indicated, that would present a pretty good financial stress on the council here, as we're in charge of the budget, and we're in charge of maintaining tax levels on the people or raising their taxes to make up for a deficit of revenue that we no longer receive. So that'll be a serious consideration. Question I have is, I understand, I still call it the General Hospital, but I guess it's Commonwealth. I understand they own about 12, at least 12 different properties, like houses and things like that, and buildings. Would you be ultimately seeking tax-exempt status on all of those buildings?
I think they are excluding.
Yep.
I'm sorry. I think they are excluding some of the property that is not being used for nonprofit at this time. But I don't know if that's being included in the subject of the property tax exemption that is already being... That has already been filed with the county.
Okay, that's a pretty important question, and if you could get an answer to it prior to next meeting we have here. So I guess get it to either Budget Finance Director, Mary Rizelle, or County Manager, Ms. Crocambeau, and she could disseminate that to council. As to what you're really looking for, how many buildings, and which ones they are, that would be helpful.
Yeah.
Will do. Thank you.
Any other questions by council members? Go ahead, Mr. Hawes.
Mr. Steinman, welcome to Wilkes-Barre.
Thank you.
Thank you for your interest in our area to make it better and to make hospitaling as, I guess, client-focused as possible. You know, I really personally appreciate that. So I'm looking at your previous accolades here. When you were in Miami-Dade, you were a teaching hospital? That system was teaching? Do you plan to see that here as well? Do you plan to make this a teaching entity?
Thank you. You know, there are some teaching programs at both Wilkes-Barre and Scranton right now, and we're gonna support those teaching programs, those residency programs, primarily through the Wright Center, and we'll continue to support those. We actually had a discussion with the Wright Center a few weeks ago during the transition, after we signed the asset purchase agreement. Their interest was, obviously, we need to make commitments to the residents. Would you support that? And we did. So we'll continue to do it. My background, as you have looked up, is I was at Jackson Health System in Miami, which is a large teaching hospital with the University of Miami. Also had three additional hospitals similar to Wilkes-Barre and Scranton, community hospitals with community doctors. And when I started there 14 years ago, they themselves had similar financial issues where revenues weren't keeping up with the expenses as well as the physical plant. So that's sort of my niche on working with hospitals and helping them get back on track. I think also, a decision was made to put the hospital to back to a not-for-profit status, which will help significantly not only, you know, and I appreciate and understand the issues about taxes, but it will also help on having access to grants, to state funds, to federal funds, and a lot of other funding sources that these hospitals greatly need.
Yeah, I think very good. I appreciate that answer. And my colleagues here talk about the payment in lieu of taxes. Obviously, we're the legislative branch. We're tasked with funding our government, so that's always our number-one concern. They took the idea right out of my mouth as well. I was thinking that. Are there any partnerships that you can think of? And again, maybe if you want to negotiate more with management. You know, obviously, we have medical staff here at our prison. We have a need for this as well. Perhaps if you can't offer a pilot or a pilt, perhaps there might be some other MOU items that you might be able to take a look at, just in the consideration of the project.
Sure. We'll be more than happy to look at any types of partnerships. And I know, very sincerely, that, you know, the taxes are very important to Luzerne County as well as the city. We wish we were in a position to assist, but we're not. We're really here to help take these hospitals, and all of you know what Wilkes-Barre General Hospital means. Some of you have been born there, your kids have been born there, et cetera. I'm very familiar with the history. I have some friends that have grown up here and live here, some doctors that I know. And we would love to help, but we're not in a position to do that. We're here to help turn these hospitals around and bring back services that have been diminished. So once we're back on our feet, that's the time for us to talk some more about this.
Many thanks.
Attorney Skeen has a question, then. Mr. Liscavich?
Laura, I think you mentioned that there are two actions going on now that you're looking at. So you already started for the tax appeal, and then there's this...
That's not being handled by my firm or myself. I understand there's a different firm that is starting to file the tax exemptions. Yep.
Okay, so that's two separate actions then. There's a tax exemption?
Absolutely.
And then you want to explain again what your side is compared to the tax exemption?
Right. So what we're asking you to do is just approve a resolution authorizing the use of the tax-exempt financing for the project. It's not an approval of the project. It's not passing any judgment on whether the project should be undertaken. But there's this one Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act of 1982 that requires when a borrower or a 501(c)(3) wants to issue tax-exempt financing, that it seeks approval from the governmental entities in which its facilities are located.
Ms. Liscavich?
Brian, if you look at page 34 and 35, all the properties are listed there. There's a lot.
And Laura, you said some of those properties won't be under this agreement? And you're just gonna tell us which ones are and which ones aren't?
We can... I will ask for the information on what they would be seeking their exemption on, those properties. I will tell you, some of the properties that are listed in there since the time the resolution was provided to you are being excluded. They're not being acquired for various reasons. There are environmental issues, or they're not critical to the use, or the nonprofit use of the facilities.
Okay, so that gives... You lead me to another question then. So when you purchase the whole shebang, you, I assume, would own those properties, but then you're gonna sell them off? How does that work?
I don't know that it's the plan to sell them. I think some of them have zero value. Some of them are in such a state of repair.
So they would just sit there and continue blight, I guess?
Those properties are both sides, right?
They're on both sides, yes.
Both sides, yeah. So let me talk a little bit about it. There are certain... Those are, I assume that's listed in the exhibit, are all the properties, both in Scranton and in Wilkes-Barre?
I'm looking at the massive list, and I only see Wilkes-Barre.
Okay. So if that's just the Wilkes-Barre list, you know, what our goal is...
Not to interrupt you, but I have to say this. I said earlier about a dozen properties, just glancing at the list, and it's written out in long form, so it's hard to understand with all the addresses. It's actually dozens of properties, so we're also concerned, of course, if they're in disrepair, would they just be left alone and continue to serve as blight in the communities? Or would they be addressed by your organization?
So at some point, we will need to address what's going on with all the properties. As you know, there's, as you can see, sir, there's extensive holdings that CHS has had. So our goal is to do an assessment of the properties. We've had people in looking at the properties. Some of them are being used, some of them are not being used. But our commitment will be to make sure that they're handled appropriately, you know, once we understand what we're using it for or not using it for.
I just counted about 70, 7-0, properties.
Okay. Ms. Krishnawski?
I just wanted to know, are the taxes up to date on all of them? Are there any delinquent ones, do you know?
I don't know.
Not that we're aware of.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I'm sure if you can look into that, maybe, just to see. And one other thing, I didn't want to degrade this conversation into it's just about money, of course. I truly love that we have a hospital like General Hospital that has a great history in Wilkes-Barre City. My grandfather was actually a medical doctor there who had a residency there and then worked there for many years. And it certainly is a special place in my heart, and I actually met my current girlfriend at Wilkes-Barre General Hospital because I work in my full-time job as an EMT and firefighter.
And she's still with him.
And she's still with me, yeah, five years later. Yeah, she always tells people I almost ran her over with a stretcher bringing a patient in. So I really, truly love that hospital, and it is actually kind of true. But I do love that hospital, and I know many people that work, and I'd love to see it continue to be here and have that organization around. So we do appreciate this effort, either way. Go ahead.
I just wanted to comment, and thank you for keeping the union people there. And I hope that you try to unionize more people at the place, because I know not all of it is unionized.
Anybody else? All right, thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Next up, we have "Discussion Regarding the Resolution Providing for..." I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but for tax-exempt status for property in the blighted area of the city of Hazelton, Allen Ridge community. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Rob Gunlock, here on behalf of Allen Ridge Associates. Here with me is Paul Stork and Gary McEwen. They're with Burke's Homes, the proposed builder on this project. Again, I'll be brief, by way of brief background. The state has some statutory structure in place called LERTA, which allows tax relief for new industrial and commercial buildings and for mixed-use projects. So it gives you two different options. The most widely one has been used is for industrial buildings. But mixed use for certain communities like Hazelton is very important. And Hazelton is, right now, really pushing a strong redevelopment effort in their community, trying to bring businesses in, get businesses going. They've got a lot of warehouses under construction, but what they don't have is new housing. There has not been any new housing in Hazelton for over 30 years. And we're here today in response to what Hazelton did, was they took the first step and they passed this mixed-use LERTA ordinance, which allows tax abatement for new housing. And so what we're trying to build is new affordable housing in downtown Hazelton. And people say, "Affordable? What's affordable? How do you get affordable housing?" Well, since COVID, we have seen prices skyrocket, not just the sticks and bricks to build the homes, all the site improvements, the insurance costs, the financing costs, it all goes into a price of a home. And so here, Burke's Home, who's from Burke's County, they build in Harrisburg, they are looking to move into Luzerne County with this project and build homes in the range of $260,000 to $270,000. Now, people say, "How could that be affordable?" Well, they're building 1,500, give or take, square-foot homes in downtown Hazelton, and they have the support of the city, and so they have a very dense project, which allows them to reduce their site costs and build in an economical way and offer homes of that price range. Unfortunately, there are no subsidies to get the homes down in Pennsylvania, unless you're a nonprofit like Habitat, maybe you can get grants. But for home builders, to get them to come into Hazelton, there's no incentives that you can offer them except real estate tax abatement. And that's what the state allows, that's what the state encourages, that's what Hazelton's trying to do. Hazelton only carries 20% of that tax burden. The county has 15%, and the school district has the rest. So it's important that you get the municipal approval first, then you get the county and the school district in order for this project to move forward. It's an important project for downtown. It's going to produce hundreds of homes, hundreds of apartments. It is right off of Broad Street. It's a deteriorated area within the city. It's walking distance of the hospital. It's something that will help jumpstart their redevelopment efforts. They need it bad. They support it. The mayor supports it. President and Council Perry supports it. And we're here tonight to introduce the project to you and hopefully secure your support for this adoption of a resolution to accept the LERTA for this project. It's a sliding scale. Right now, you're receiving about $3,500 a year on these two properties. One of them's in Act 319, the other one isn't. If both went into Act 319, you get about 100 bucks a year. So it's nickels. What you get on this project the first three years is zero. It's three years, it's 100% abatement on the real estate improvements, not the land. You'll still get the same taxes on the land. After the abatement expires, you're gonna get over $600,000 a year versus the $3,000 you're getting now. Are there additional services you have to provide? Sure. There are some additional incremental services that you have to provide. But we submit to you that it's fairly nominal in exchange for the revenue that's gonna come out of this project if it moves forward. For Burke's Home to move forward, they need the LERTA. They've gotta have that incentive to get people to buy a house in the city of Hazelton instead of going further out in Butler and these other suburban communities where they've got golf amenities and other attractions. And if the price of the house is the same in Hazelton versus the suburbs, they're losing them to the suburbs. So they need an incentive in Hazelton to get people to come back into the city and buy in the city. And the LERTA is very important, and it's clearly a deteriorated area. So the representatives from Burke's Home are here. I think Gary wanted to say a few words about the importance of the LERTA. Gary, take two more minutes, Mr. Chairman? Gary, if, take two more minutes, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Be real quick, appreciate the time that we have. We're excited to be a joint venture in this project. We've been in the building business since nineteen-seventy-three. It's privately held by one family. Our current market, as was previously stated, is Burke's County. We are expanding in this direction, northeast. We have a project very, we also have projects in State College and Harrisburg. One of the things that we, we kind of want to be a major league player in a minor league market, look for a minor league baseball team in the area. All of our regions have that. Our main office is just south of Redding. We have a project very similar with, with product that we believe is affordable housing just east of the city of Redding. It is in the same price range as, as what we're proposing, which is the two-sixty to two-seventy. The only difference there is, the, the, why the LERTA's important is to bring that price down. We got a very good buy on that property. It was a distressed property. The improvements were pretty much finished. Our purchase price on lots was very low. Some of the reasons why this is important, it's, it will allow us to compete with new homes in the suburbs, which have, may have some golf courses and some other amenities. The tax abatement would, would generate purchasing power for the buyers and possibly long-term savings. It also provides incentives for people to purchase homes and move back into the city and support the city redevelopment efforts, allows us to build affordable housing, increases jurisdictional income from fees for permits for water, sewer, transfer taxes. Why Luzerne County? The warehouses and the jobs that are being created, the economic revitalization, a partnership to provide affordable housing, regional airport, and again, a major league player in a minor league market. So, thank you. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, council members? Miss, who's that? Wait, hold. Okay, Mr. Perry then, Ms. Krzyzniewski, you have a question as well? Okay, all right, great, go ahead.
Jim's my brother, by the way.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Question for you. The tax abatement, is that for the buyer?
Yes, it gets passed on to the buyer. They all get ten years, so the first three years is a hundred percent, and then it drops down incrementally to the last year.
It's on a schedule.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
So, it allows the buyer to buy more home than they otherwise could buy because they're not paying the real estate taxes, so they can pay a higher mortgage payment and get into that house. And so, that's what it's offering them.
And how many homes are you going to build at the beginning?
There's going to be about two-hundred-and-fifty townhomes. There's going to be eleven singles. This community was, was proposed, I think your brother, the president of council, lives next door in the singles. That was thirty or forty years ago, and then they stopped the project halfway through. So, Allen Ridge is building eleven single-family homes up against the existing single-family community. Then they're building two-hundred-and-fifty townhomes that Burke's Home is going to build and sell to individuals, that's not a rental community. Then they're proposing rental apartments, brand-new rental apartments along the end road there, across from the quarry. So, it's, it's a location that works well for the city, and, you know, we think that it's housing that's going to be needed with all these warehouses. I mean, on the books, in the city of Hazelton, they have at least five or eight million square feet. Hazel Township has another ten million or more square feet. I think in total, it's about thirty million square feet that's on the books throughout that region, and there is no new housing there for the employees that are coming into the area. And so, it's, it's an important segue to get it started, and this will help jumpstart that here.
Correct me if I'm wrong, I think I read in the paper, did the school district deny your, this project?
They did deny it. We were frankly a little disappointed and surprised. We were there one night, I was there, following a presentation that somebody made about a comprehensive plan, and the number-one factor in that comprehensive is the lack of affordable housing in the area, and the school district supported affordable housing. We thought that we had their support for this. We didn't achieve enough votes on that request. Our plan is hopefully to secure this here from the county and the city and Burke's Homes, now that they're on board to build homes, plans to go back and ask them to reconsider that decision again, because it's so important that that LERTA is granted to start this project here in downtown Hazelton.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Krzyzniewski?
That was my question about affordable housing, because when you have houses that you can't afford to live in, what good are they for the most part? And you need to have affordable housing, and even for that matter, apartments. What, what it's going to be like the starting amount, somebody would pay for an apartment there, because I know that there's jobs around there, but again, you have to have a living wage job to get a house like that.
Yeah, I, we'll have to get, I'll get you that number before we're back at the next meeting, but certainly it's, if there's a few projects outside of Hazelton market, I think there's one project here in Wilkes-Barre that's a newer apartment building, but there's nothing in Hazelton that's been built in the last thirty or forty years. So, if you see the condition of those units, these are going to be modern apartments built at a garden-style building with, you know, all the code-compliant requirements. You don't see that now in Hazelton, and hopefully this will provide housing for the new employees that are coming to the, to the new warehouses that are being built in the area.
And I also had another question. Do you plan on doing anything green, like putting solar panels on the houses for people or giving them an option? You know, because going green is the way to go, so are these, at least an option to these people? Because if you're spending that kind of money on a house, why wouldn't that be an option?
Well, certainly, the building codes currently have all kinds of requirements for efficiency, and that will all be in the homes and built into the homes to save on utilities. But, it's, it's, it's certainly a community-by-community issue as to whether you allow them to put solar panels on the roofs. I think that's a, a practice that is allowed by, by the rules and regulations of the community, correct? If they wanted to put a solar panel on the roof?
If they wanted, it could be included in, like, the HOA docs.
Yeah, so we could allow them to do that, but it would have to be the roof. It couldn't be the yards.
Right, 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 exactly.
Yeah, yeah, it's all going to be common areas outside of the homes. It's going to be maintained by a planned community association in a, you know, first-class manner, so.
My only other thing is, what about traffic? Because it just seems like there, there's going to be an awful lot of traffic being...
We did a full traffic study for the community, and it had no issues whatsoever. There are several roads there that lead out to Broad Street. Everything does go to Broad Street. The apartments are not going to be built using Wilson Street. The apartments are going to use what's called Club Forty Road. Club Forty Road does allow two different ways, so you can go to Broad and you can go the other way, but most of the traffic will go to Broad Street. And we did a traffic study, and there was no issues. It was approved by the city.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Liskavich? Did you have a question? Oh, you did? I'm sorry, Mr. Haas, I apologize.
That's all right. Mr. Gunlock, welcome to Wilkes-Barre and the business owner as well. Thanks for your interest in Hazelton. We really appreciate that. We have these discussions fairly often here in the county about giving out LERTAs and which was prior KOZ zones, and my, my consistent point is that government continually gets involved in the free-market economy, and we have an abundance, an overabundance of warehouses here in the northeast. You're, you're very familiar with it. That has begotten a need for extra housing. So, we have, our governing bodies are giving tax abatements to businesses to come here, and we look at businesses here, and now we have a housing need, so now we're asked and tasked to give tax abatements to developers now. And no disrespect to what you do, I'm sure you have wonderful developments, but this is, this is what my, the alarm I'm trying to sound that we keep on talking about here. We have to, we really have to fund our infrastructure. I don't know if you heard earlier, we were talking about, we've got a lot of projects that are underway here, and there's a lot of county roads and infrastructure down there in South County as well. So, I do appreciate your sliding scale. This is actually a little more fair and equitable LERTA than I've seen in, in quite a few other asks. Usually, they ask for a hundred percent abatement for the four years and get, throw crumbs back at us. And you're the developers, you're taking a risk, but I keep on, on coming back to the main point, we are, we are subsidizing development on all different facets, and who ultimately hurts are all the people who live here, because our county taxpayers are paying for, for other, and I know we, we go around about this disagreements and things like that, but I, the school, the school district is the big taxing body, as you're very well, we're aware of. We're maybe about twenty percent of the, of the taxes that any, anybody's going to pay here, so.
Fifteen, fifteen percent, yeah.
Fifteen percent, so we're, we're fifteen percent, and I know that might sound like a deal breaker, but tell us that's an awful lot of money.
Yeah. I'd submit to you, Mr. Haas, two things as a small business owner. Number one, bringing this many people into the city of Hazelton, who will frequent all of the stores and shops, will help lift up the whole redevelopment effort. Now, these homes are still paying full transfer tax to the school district and the municipality. There's, they're also paying the, the wage tax as well, and so those are significant income streams to the city and to the school district who provide more of the services. The county, with all due respect, doesn't provide a lot of services to these new people who are coming in in comparison to the revenue you're going to receive. You're receiving three-thousand dollars now on that vacant land today. At the end of this LERTA, you're going to receive six-hundred thousand dollars. Those homes aren't going away. Homes are different than the warehouse. The warehouse could empty up, somebody could come in for a tax reduction. These homes are always going to stay full. They might go up in price, they might go down in price, but these are brand-new homes. They're going to be there for the next thirty, forty years, and you're going to receive taxes at that schedule for the next thirty, forty years. So, I think, short-term, yes, you're, you're incentivizing the developer. Without it, you're never going to see homes in Hazelton. You haven't seen them for thirty, forty years, you won't see them for another thirty, forty years. There's no way to build them and compete downtown without something. You need a little incentive to do it, and this is the only incentive, unfortunately, that's available, and without it, you're just not going to see new housing, you're not going to see a redevelopment effort in Hazelton. So, you know, that's what we'd submit to you. If you look at the chart, long-term, I think it's in the county's best interest to facilitate this housing, because you're going to realize all that revenue over that after the ten-year abatement burns off.
No, absolutely, and, and that's why, that's what I'm exactly talking about, for the long-term, that's a wonderful thing. And right now, we have a lot of our towns and municipalities, they've been actually having a lot of vacancy rates for many decades, and now they're coming back because people are relocating here from the big cities. They like our quality of life here, they like our green space, they, they like these jobs that are paying not quite a livable wage, but if you hustle and you work hard and your family members work hard, you can have sometimes two and three jobs and, and make it, just like all the immigrants that came here before us. And this is just an ongoing debate. I'm sorry, I have to belabor the point here with my colleagues and yourselves.
It's a fair debate. Let me give you this fact. City of Hazelton, over the last five years, they've had twenty-nine new homes. Not a new development, just some infill homes. Over the last ten years, they've increased their population by close to five thousand people. They need housing, and, and that's why the president of council, the mayor, they're advocating for the new housing and this whole redevelopment effort they're doing. And so, we found a builder to come in and build, but they, they can't build and compete without some incentive. They need some, some more here to help compete.
Yeah, I appreciate it, Mr. Gunlock, and that's exactly, there's very little developed land in Hazelton, because it's, it's filled up, because Hazelton grew up really just like Wilkes-Barre and other major cities around here where you have houses that are right next door to each other. They're a foot apart, and that was the housing stock that we have here. That's what, one of, I actually think it's really attractive about the northeast. I like that type of housing. We have, we have duplexes here.
Yeah.
Okay, so, that, that is the case, because that was the, the zoning now, and I know you have a different model, I looked at some of your plans there, but you're coming from Burke's County, and the opportunities have now pretty much dried up there, because the Lehigh Valley is now experiencing overdevelopment, and now they have a congestion problem, the same kind of problem that we, we talked about quite a bit here, that we, we don't want that congestion problem. And again, it's, obviously, you're representing the principals here, and I'm representing the taxpayers and those people who are really concerned with our quality of life here.
Yeah.
And just making sure we don't put our, our foot on the scales.
I appreciate that. Encourage you to talk to the mayor of, of the city. This, this piece is ninety acres. It's, it's the piece they've earmarked for their high-density housing. They've earmarked other pieces for the warehouses and the commercial, but this is where they're trying to get it started. You can walk to the hospital from this piece. It's a good downtown piece, and so it will help jumpstart, they believe, the entire city of Hazelton.
Okay, any other, any other council members? Mr. Thornton, then, Mr. Sabatino?
Yeah, uh, thank you, gentlemen, thank you for being here. So, I understand, earlier you mentioned the Hazelton, the school district has not granted the LERTA, correct?
That's correct.
And I, I heard the reasons why were partly due because the school district now is way overtaxed with the number of students, and, and it would be very difficult for, for them to handle a large influx of more students. I, I'm not speaking on half of the school district, that's just a rumor I heard. I don't know if that's true, but typically, school district taxes represent sixty percent or so of the property, total property tax.
Sixty-five percent, here we estimate, yeah.
Sixty-five, so the other thirty-five would be the county and the local jurisdiction.
Yes.
With the smallest one of those three being the local jurisdiction, the city of Hazelton. So, my question to you is, absent of the LERTA from the school district, and let's imagine that's not forthcoming in the future, is your project still scheduled to proceed?
Well, we haven't pulled the plug on it yet. We, we, we absolutely need the county's support and the city's support. We have the city's support, together that's thirty-five percent. Burke's Home intends to go back and ask the school district to reconsider that and, and maybe reach a compromise, but it's extremely important to move this project forward.
Then, could I ask, was the LERTA schedule proposed to them similar to this one, or was it different?
Yes, we, we, we didn't monkey with the schedule. I know some developers come in and they change it and they try to get a hundred. We followed the state guideline. This is right out of the state book, and this is what the state statute says. I'm, I'm not sure you're allowed to monkey with it by taking more than the state statute allows, but we followed the state statute exactly on the percentages, so it's the mixed-use LERTA.
We've received different LERTA schedules.
I know.
From different entities, and even the same entity resubmiting a different LERTA schedule than they originally proposed, because they knew it was going to fail here, and, and they revised it.
Okay.
To make it a little more favorable to the county here.
Yeah, we took it right out of the statute, and it, it's a sliding scale down, and then, you know, we gave you the chart. Cumulatively, we see this at over four million dollars at the, at the end of the ten-year abatement period and taxes to the county, and that'll just continue at six-hundred thousand a year. So, from a fiscal standpoint, I think you're getting, not giving. I think over the long-term, you're getting a lot of additional revenue that you're not otherwise going to get, and you're helping a municipality grow.
I fully, I, I agree with that, and I understand, and I'm all for, we have housing development, I'm all for it. It's not just us eleven that are concerned. We have over three-hundred thousand residents in the county who, that sometimes we're forced to raise taxes on because we're not getting enough taxes, so that's, that's always a consideration, like Mr. Haas stated. That, that's the only reason, but I, I'm hoping, I'm hoping, hoping your project proceeds, even absent of the school district LERTA.
The school district was a positive fiscal, too. We're happy to share those projections with you. It was a, it was a, a significant positive over that ten-year period as well, factoring in the projected discount for the school-aged children that would attend these units. So, hopefully, they'll reconsider on the new term, but this project has received all permits and approvals, other than one technical DEP permit to replace the sewer line there that needs replacement, because it's over forty years old, so the project's ready to go. If we can get the LERTA, we'll, we'll move it forward.
Mr. Sabatino?
Thank you. Thank you for being here tonight. Mike, I have two questions for you. Rather than speculate on, why did the school district turn you down?
We didn't get a direct answer and a response to that. We did read the newspaper article, and I think the chairman made a comment that he was disappointed that the housing wasn't more affordable. There was discussion at one time about the home selling for three-hundred thousand dollars, give or take. At one time, they had two-car garages. Burke's Home has come in, they've scaled it back a little bit to fifteen-hundred square feet, and they're looking to bring this in for about two-sixty, if they can secure the subcontractors in this marketplace to work with them on the pricing, but that's the only answer we got, was in the newspaper.
And it leads me to my second question, like, looking at your, your submittal in And it leads me to my second question, like, looking at your submittal in our agenda packets, I don't see two-hundred-and-sixty, two-hundred-and-seventy thousand as affordable housing, would you guys be willing to change your plan to include more affordable housing in the one-fifty to one-seventy-five range?
We would love to do one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar housing. Unfortunately, since COVID, if you're building a fifteen-hundred-square-foot house, the bricks and sticks alone is about a hundred-and-twenty dollars a square foot, so that's going to get you about a hundred-and-seventy, a hundred-and-eighty thousand just to build the house. You've got the site improvements, you've got the grading, you've got the roads, the curbing, the blacktop, the street trees, the lights, that's about fifty thousand dollars. You've got insurance costs, you've got transfer tax, you've got city permits, you've got financing costs, you have realtor fees, you have a whole host of costs that, when you add those all up, Mr. Sabatino, with all due respect, you can't believe you're at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and so it just, there's just no way to build a house for a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars unless somebody was subsidizing it, and the only subsidies available is Section Eight housing, some type of federal subsidy, which we're not promoting here, or a nonprofit for humanities builds ten homes, because they get everything donated, and they can do it for a hundred-and-fifty thousand, but there's just no way Burke's Homes can build any less than, they're coming in low to try to get it jump-started at two-sixty.
I understand, I appreciate that, but you're only building upwards of like two-hundred-and-sixty homes, but you're putting in three-hundred-and-eighty-four apartment units in there, and your company stands to benefit from years of revenue from those apartments, so to lower the costs for some of the housing, maybe like use some of the revenue that you're going to get from these apartments for the next twenty-five, thirty years, or while you own it, before you sell it to the next person, to help out people who actually want to be homeowners in this county. I mean, you're talking about almost four-hundred apartment units, and only two-hundred-and-sixty-ish homes.
Right.
You know, maybe take a harder look at what you're benefiting from this in the long-term, and come back with, even if you got it to two-twenty.
Yeah.
Or two-thirty, that would be a big improvement, you know, you're valuing each apartment at a hundred-and-fifty thousand per unit, you know? Each unit is valued at a hundred-and-fifty thousand, so you have room, and you're going to make money off of this as a landlord.
Mr. Sabatino, with all due respect, there's no sense, we could never build a home for less than two-sixty in today's world, it's just as impossible unless somebody's subsidizing. As far as those apartments go, those apartments are phase-two after the townhomes get going and get built, we plan to build those buildings one at a time, they're twenty-four or thirty-six unit buildings, and as they lease up, then they'll go to the next one. We're projecting that those apartment buildings may take ten or so years to lease up, and the cost to build those apartment buildings and the rental that needs to be returned on those is just not as great as you want, and I'm happy to share with you some of the comparables in the city of Hazleton on what people pay for apartments, it's, you can't pay what they're paying now and cover the cost of these apartments, we have to take a leap of faith that workers are going to come to Hazleton that have increased salaries, that can pay a higher price for apartments than currently the market value is, but there's just no way you can sell a house for less than two-sixty, a single-family home. Now, if you want to do stacked homes or condos, we're proposing real homes, these are attached homes for homeowners to buy and live in and be proud of, and you just can't do it for less than two-sixty.
Go ahead.
Now, would you be willing to take maybe a hundred-and-eighty-four of your apartment units and make them stacked homes or, you know, condos?
Well, that would be up to the city of Hazleton, I mean, that requires a new ordinance, they'd have to allow stacked homes, we wouldn't mind building stacked homes, you could probably build stacked duplexes, now you're putting a lot more people condensed in an area with the stacked, the stacked townhomes, but maybe it drops in price twenty or forty thousand dollars, but you're not dropping a price, you could do a stacked townhome on top of each other, these are one-thousand-square-foot units now, they'd probably sell for two-hundred-and-twenty thousand or up to do it, so maybe you could do a one-thousand-square-foot, we don't see the demand, we see the demand as the three-bedroom home, the three-bedroom, half-a-bath downstairs, two baths upstairs, a traditional townhome, we see that's the demand here in the marketplace, and that's what we're trying to deliver, and if there's any ideas that anyone has to help subsidize these, we look for grants anywhere, the city helped us look for grants, there's just no money out there for for-sale residential housing. Section Eight apartment housing there is, but that's not what we want to do.
Understood. One more quick question.
Yes.
I know they asked you before, but you didn't mention what the rents on these apartments are.
We're going to get that for you.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Good, we'll provide any updated information through your solicitor, and hope to see you at a future meeting on this project.
All right, we appreciate your time and you staying so late for us.
No problem, thank you.
All right, next up, discussion regarding resolution authorizing county manager to execute an agreement of sale for a parcel owned by the property located in the city of Pittston to the city of Pittston redevelopment authority, Manager Crocomo, it's ten oh eight PM, just so everybody knows.
Just FYI, this was, they submitted it to us December first of two thousand and twenty-two, it did go through the real estate committee, but then it was also voted by council on March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, to allow them to advertise, so it's been, you know, an extremely long amount of time, they have asked about it several times, unfortunately, it just got fallen between cracks, I guess, so if there's any other questions about it, I just wanted to let you know that it is something that we were moving forward with before.
Okay, thank you, any questions? Awesome. Division reports.
Any questions, call, write, do an airplane message.
All right, public comment. Mr. Griffith, you're on. I think I'm going to consider this harassment.
I won't even be three minutes. I just want to commend the members of council that questioned the gentleman that was just standing here about affordable housing, we're talking about a two-hundred, Ms. Krishnowski, Mr. Sabatino, Harry Haas, a couple others, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house is not affordable housing, I'm sorry to tell you, not when you've got warehouse workers you're trying to put in those homes, you've got to have a sixty-thousand to eighty-thousand-dollar income that will afford that. He did mention an HOA fee, can you imagine what the HOA fee is going to be on those properties when they're building and breaking ground on a brand-new property for curbs, sidewalks, and HOA fees? So that's not affordable, I get the fact that they want the LERTA, and it's commendable for them, they're good salesmen, they want that, and it's all great and wonderful, and the property owner's going to get the break, but he's making a profit. Build a smaller house, build a thousand-square-foot house, oh, I get it, there's not enough profit for that, that's your problem, but if you want to build affordable housing, and you're coming to us to get the LERTA because you want to try and help our people build affordable housing, and then we'll have a problem with it, thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn.
Thank you for keeping it short.
Second, all in favor.
Aye.
Pos, meeting's adjourned.
Nay.
All right, let's try not to do this again, people.